All right, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for order for Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. Could I have a roll call, please?
Chad Sexton Duranian present?
Veronica Kell, presence.
We lost Teresa off the.
Yeah. All right. Please join me for the closing meetings. Next, I'd like to. Which stands one nation. Thank you. But I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded. It is live on channel nine and it will be posted after the fact on the Towns and Police Channel. For chairman's additions or deletions, I have none that I know of. I have one question, though. Eric, the thing that needs to be signed off on for CBPG, the report to Anna Witten, does that need to come before the board for a vote? Because if it does, I should put that on.
Yeah, I don't believe so. I think it's either the chair, yeah.
We've already closed that out, okay. All right, in that case, I have no additions or deletions. Does anybody else have? Eric, anything to add? All right, public comment period. Is there any public comments?
We see nothing from the floor.
Seeing none. Moving on to reviewing the meeting minutes for 7/19/2022, 8:02/2022, and 12:06/2022. Anything, let's take them one at a time. So is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 19th, 2022?
So moved.
And I will second. Any discussion? I had one spelling, I don't know how important that is, though. It's Susan McNally and A-L-L-Y as opposed to Nelly on the second page under the Library Board of Trustees. I'm right smack there in the middle. That was very bad. Anything else to say about it? All right, then, for vote, all those in favor?
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. And see that Teresa, it looks like she's starting to be doing this.
She's committing.
Okay, we'll go on to the next set. This is August 2nd, 2022.
I move that we approve the minutes of August 2nd, 2022.
And I will second that motion. Any comments on the August 2nd minutes?
I do not. Teresa's up running.
Yeah, I'll pull her in in a second. All right. All those in favor?
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. And Teresa, I'm going to add you to the meeting remotely. What time is it? At 6:07.
Correct.
All right, and we have an appointment. What time is our appointment?
We have one more minute.
Okay, let's do one more. Let's do that before, is that all right, chief?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so December 6th, 2022 is our third set of minutes. Is there a motion?
A note that we approve the December 6th, 2022 minutes.
Is there a second?
You admitted, Teresa.
Second.
All right, any discussion on these?
We do not have anything on this.
Anything, Teresa, that you want to add or subtract from those minutes?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I have nothing to add to this, so. I would, I guess we are going to do roll call votes because we have a member remote. So Chaz, how do you vote?
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Teresa?
Teresa Morris, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right. With that, we're going to move on to 2.1. Chief Sartellus with us tonight to discuss the police organization chart. So.
Excellent, sure. Ms. Morris, I just had Sabrina email you a copy of the handout that I'm providing the other board members.
Thank you.
I'll sweep my chair over so I can actuate like all kind of mixed over.
Yeah, so I could. I'm trying to get back in.
All right.
Connecting allegedly.
So just as easy getting is, the technical issue is kind of squared away. Just for point of clarification and the reason for the meeting before the board today, that 13 of 15 full-time sworn positions, oh, as we speak. I have officers slated, I've been through background and have conditional offers in place for the remaining two spots. Those two officers that are have conditional offers put out our entry level officers, obviously, and we would promote from our ranks backfilling as we kind of go along. The handout that I provided gives you that kind of information on the front. Little, little difficult to read, given the authorized and not authorized and that type of thing. But it gives you an idea of what our staffing level looks like. The org chart as it stands is the second page. And that is what it looks like. My presentation gets a little bit more granular so you can get exposed to the duties and the duties and tasks of each of the command officers. So we can discuss what I'm looking to propose in lieu of rehiring or refilling that second lieutenant spot, given Mark Jean Cottage retiring.
Oh, guys, I feel like I'm side swiping the chief's presentation by Zoom not connecting, unable to connect.
Can I? Are you bringing up his?
PowerPoint.
Powerpoint.
Let's see, I'm giving you one more. I apologize for giving one more try.
So I could try it.
Yeah, I'll see if it lets me in.
Eric, do you, do you need screen share?
I think the problem is I got booted. I was in and now I'm not. And.
Okay.
It's giving, giving me the evil eyeball.
Okay, because I can't find you on the list here. I don't know if you're still.
No, I'm not there.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know how that feels.
Okay, well, just let me know if you need me.
Because I was in five minutes early tonight, so.
And we saw you there, Teresa, and then you went away. I have no idea. I went to start the meeting.
Yeah, well, rather than. Rather than wait.
If I get booted, then we know that.
Right.
The world is not meant to see your PowerPoint. Yeah, it's here. Because some ads by Zoom, one problem with the Zoom, not PowerPoint.
Sense for me to come around.
It's going to be projecting in Keynote. Just know that.
Sure. It'll be a pain for you to have to advance the slide.
All right, so let me. Hartley, do I have screen share capability? It kicked me out of soon.
No, you're there.
Am I there?
Yeah.
There I am, okay. Cheers, great, thank you. All right. Which one I want? And then I'm going to hit play.
Okay. And I'll just, I'll tell you when to advance the slides. So that's just a visual representation of what I've already handed you. Kind of delineates the lieutenants in each of these two big bureaus. Over on the left-hand side, we have a box that kind of gives you an idea of what we've got for staff. And so we have basically 13 of 15 full-time sworn staff. At full complement, we have two least the top, direct reports of the administrative assistant and the two lieutenants underneath the operations lieutenant who handles patrol duties. You have two full-time police sergeants. We're authorized and funded for three. We have two currently, current openings. We have nine full-time patrol officers and one part-time officer. Over on the other side, the support services lieutenant has the school resource officer reports to him. And also we have a full-time records corps, so you can advance the slide ahead.
Maybe actually one, remember? Is that the next one?
Yep, yep. So here it is in a little bit more of a, of a, kind of an easier way to kind of figure out the operation side. So the way that it was designed when we originally went with the two bureau commanders, meaning the operations lieutenant and the support services lieutenant, we divided the sergeants into shifts. And the way that it used to work is you had a first shift, I mean, a second shift sergeant, a third shift sergeant, and then you have a sergeant that split. And it was first, second, and then splits. So you always had a sergeant, no sergeant on third shift. When we came up with this, we thought it offered better supervision around the quad. Under this model, we have the operations lieutenant and three sergeants underneath them, one on second, one on third, and one splits has the two days off of the second shift sergeant and the two days off of the third shift sergeant. Each one of them commands three patrol officers underneath them. You can advance it. So how it looks like now, as far as our current patrol staffing looks, it looks a little like this due to our vacancies. Now, we've got a couple officers on that are assigned days to first shift. We have a vacancy backfill now by the patrol sergeant, one of the patrol sergeants that we have, the only one we have currently. And then second is full and third is full. So these two positions that we have outstanding are meant to backfill the second sergeant and then the lieutenant. So just a couple current things to talk about, about the current model is we do have, we did have a three-model sergeant model. We suspended it when we created the second lieutenant position due to some staffing issues and funding, experience of the officers, that type of thing. Sergeants currently on days because of that donut pool that you saw him chasing around, which is that vacancy. Vacant positions have been filled the last year in almost two now, not through overtime, which has created a bit of a curmudgeon as far as that goes. Yeah, one officer currently in training, just graduated from the academy on Friday. He's in, he's in field training now. And we have two recruit officers lined up and ready to hire. They've been through a rigorous hiring process, including a written test, a physical test, oral boards, background investigations, executive interviews, psychologicals, physicals, the whole shebang, and they are ready. One's queued for the February academy and one is just waiting for our nod to bring him forward as far as an appointment is concerned. We had a sergeant's test tentatively scheduled for February, mid-March. I made that announcement, it's no longer tentative. There is one, the date is to be determined, but we do have a sergeant's test that is pending. For that one, I'm going to ask that we fill both and I'm going to go into that a little bit deeper. When fully staffed, supervises our third unit on duty, absent time loss requests and sick calls, et cetera. We have not had that since I've been here, I'm in my fifth year. You can, you can advance that.
Didn't move?
No.
No?
Yeah. So these are the duties of the operations lieutenant, who is the patrol operations commander. Day-to-day patrol operations, he is in charge or she is in charge of all patrol and field scheduling. They, they are part of our case approval process. They report, they review reports filed by patrol officers. They supervise that, they approve, they refer criminal investigations to, to the support services or out to another agency. They handle all of our traffic, our directed enforcement, our accident investigations, that type of thing, any of our resource allocations. We're also part of our neighbors, which is our, we have a mandate to report crime, incident reports, use of force, all kinds of reporting requirements are done through that person because he does pretty much control our records management system. They're also in charge of our fleet maintenance and our equipment needs. The support services lieutenant, who is in the admin position more or less, is in charge of our professional standings. They are the person that oversees our hiring, our testing, our field training, our in-service training, our policy promulgations. They are our liaison to the DA's office and they handle our prosecution. They oversee our court records. They oversee our evidence and property room, which is, which is a pretty significant responsibility. They also oversee our school resource officer's position. So there's mine, we can skip on that. Those are just administrative services that I provide in my, my, my division, but no sense in that. So if we were to fill the vacant lieutenant's position, the first caveat is, the first thing that I think we need to discuss before we go into the pros of doing that is the big con, which is the elephant in the room, and that is there's no internal staff currently in the Townsend Police Department that would meet the minimum qualifications for that position. That being said, where we fill it, either by going outside or just so for conversation sake, say we have someone within, the position is funded. It's certainly consistent with our organizational chart and the long-term goals of our department. That does absolutely balance the workload, makes it so command officer supervision is on evenings five days a week, which is a significant thing. That's a very high liability time around the department, as you can imagine. Duties are commensurate with experience, so you're putting those administrative duties in the, in the box for somebody that is capable of handling those types of things. Plain and simple line of command and span of control. And it makes it easier for me, in a career development sense, to bring the lieutenants along so that they will be able to fill my position should I move on. You know, budget, managing critical incidents, internal investigations, professional standards, that everything. I think also it does represent a best practice. If you look at any departments around the country, certainly ones that are nationally accredited, you see something like the command structure that I'm advancing, maybe at a little bit more granular level, but you do see these big areas that are, that certainly where these duties reside. So aside from no internal staff meeting, the minimum qualification that would require that we move outside, that's contrary to the board's direction and I think the community's direction that they have seemed to have given over the last few years, that they would like to look inward for our promotions and inward for our long-term leadership. I think that represents itself, manifests itself in our Townsend First Policy. I think it would be an impact morale of the officers, their perception of their long-term career prospects. That would have some retention concerns, certainly for the guys that are pushing double digits in times of service. There's also a learning curve for outside hires, no question about that. I experienced that firsthand. In addition to the institutional knowledge, if you went out of state, you're looking at state laws and there's a whole host of things that present themselves as far as the learning curve for hiring an outside person. So would we go instead to a three-sergeant model where we would not necessarily hire a lieutenant, but we would look to hire an additional sergeant? So we would bring that complement to three. Right now, there's one. The pros in that, I think we can go right through the pros and cons. The pros in that is we would have supervisors seven days a week on evenings and midnights. And that is profound change from where we have it now. We have never had, in my understanding, midnight supervision, at least in memory of the people that work here currently. And it proves experience level on all those shifts, which is where our young guys reside. Our guys, when they get graduated from the academy, they get third shift by virtue of their fact that they have no senior. So our younger people work those less desirable shifts. Putting people with supervisors is much better for a long term. I think it's consistent with our goals of career development to prepare people for ascension in our agency. It's consistent with the intent, I think, of the Townsend First Policy, our own retention goals. I think there would be an increased morale. I think it increases the opportunity for officers to interact with a sergeant directly. The third shift, for instance, sees an officer at 11 o'clock, sees a sergeant or a supervisor at 11 o'clock and won't see another one until about 7:00 AM. It's a hello and goodbye type situation. Not a lot of mentoring takes place that could take place when you have a supervisor on each shift. That span of control is excellent if you look back at that org chart that I gave you. Each of these sergeants are responsible for three people. Throughout the agency, that span of control remains one in three, one in six, which certainly is a best practice. Again, consistent with our long-term goals and the position has been funded and is funded. The cons for the model, and there are cons for sure. I prefer the two lieutenant model and three-sergeant model combination, to be honest. But the con would be that the administrative duties would have to be spread out between my bureau and the support services bureau, which is Lieutenant Peach and the sergeants that we would be hiring, that we would be promoting. The second con, I think, is the funding for the position long-term, meaning regaining funding for that lieutenant's position, where now we'll be occupied by a sergeant conceivably making 10% less, or I don't know what the math would be, but you can catch my drift as far as that goes. And one of the cons is there's no command officer on second shift. It's a sergeant in more lieutenant. There, there is, that is a distinction with a difference because I do think complaint intake and the like is nice to, when it's a command officer as opposed to a sergeant who does still have some patrol responsibilities. So it is a con, but not one that is yielding all that fatal.
Got it.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, well, maybe I'll leave this up here in case people want to go backwards. Or anything. So questions? Chaz, do you have a question?
I'm not ready at the moment. I reserve the right to.
As always, the phone's always available.
Teresa, do you have any questions?
Can you just go into a little bit more on the con about no command officer on second shift? So the, when you go to this three-sergeant model, right? One of those sergeant as opposed to a lieutenant, but he would still be in a command-type position, though, correct?
Absolutely. It would be, it would be better than what we have because currently we have shifts without supervisors at all. So if you look at this slide here, it actually does a pretty decent job of explaining. What we'd have is we'd have a first shift, a first shift would be staffed by the chief of police or the operations lieutenant. So for day shift, five days a week, we have a command officer on. And that is, the weakness is those other two shifts would be manned by sergeants in a patrol, in a command capacity. So yeah, there's a, there certainly is some limitations with that, particularly on the complaint intake piece and making significant decisions. We have project safety, for instance, we have a prisoner for the weekend. Do we utilize their services at the county jail? What happens if it's a female? There are some things that happen that would, that sometimes require a command officer to make a more detailed decision. And certainly that would just result in a phone call as opposed to an officer being able, a lieutenant being able to make that call on his own without having to kind of put people in that arm working. So what that would look like.
Can I? And I'm not trying to overstep and if I do, just tell me. But you're usually, if they run into that type of situation normally, right? You can be available for that type of question, right?
Yeah, you could, you can ask my wife about that one. Yes, absolutely, yeah. And a quick text, generally speaking, clears that up. It just does make it a little bit more, it just does make it, it's not often. So conceivably, you look at this command structure, you just take out that operations lieutenant and you'll see how it kind of works. You have to spread the work out between the chief and the support services lieutenant to kind of fill those vacancies. But, but you're right, yeah, there is, it's not difficult. I get calls all weekend. I spent some time on the phone yesterday with the, with the patrol staff because we've had a rash of armed robberies next door in, in Ashby. So I call in and say, hey, listen, can you make sure we have the officers making a stop at every place that's open that takes money tonight? Just make an appearance, make contact with the cashier, just be around. So I do that type of stuff on my days off pretty regularly, so it's not really much changed.
But the people you anticipate putting in these position aren't going to be able to be leaders and take command. It's just you're not, when you say command, you mean no actual lieutenant, but they'll be in a command position.
Precisely, and it will be the officer in charge, precisely, yes. And anybody we move to promote to the position of sergeant certainly would have to have those qualities to be able to make those types of decisions. Yeah, we have a testing procedure for that promotion.
Thank you.
So my, I think that this structure is fine and should be kept and should be funded. That's what I think. And we should do the three sergeants as well. So is there an either/or on this or is there an everything? I realize that you wouldn't hire the lieutenant right away. But I would want that position open so that there's a path for the officers that we do have.
And that would be the best case scenario for me. I think when, when these sergeants gain the experience necessary for that leave, I think it's one of these things where I think you cannot leapfrog or pole-volt sergeant's position. I mean, it's just you need time and grade to get to a point where you have the ability to function as a lieutenant. I think those duties are very, very important to the agency. They certainly are advanced skills. And I think that give me a few years with that open lieutenant's position vacant and I would revisit it from time to time to see if the sergeants or any of them are ready to, to move into that slot. That would be my, I think that makes for certainly a good morale booster for the guys. There's something to shoot for, all the way down to the guy that just walked through the door. There is a path for ascension within that agency. Also gives me an opportunity to cross-train, to give guys an idea of what they're walking into at their next level of command. It has a lot of benefits to it. There are some cons again, but I, but we are at a way different place than we were four or five years ago as far as stability is concerned, as far as policy development is concerned and as far as staffing is concerned. I think we're one of the only agencies in the area that have all of our positions accounted for. Recruitment is a, is a, is a bear and I do not want to have to do that again if I don't have to. If you remove Lieutenant Peach from this situation, we have a completely different conversation because he seriously is a significant experience level. So losing a guy like that and then we'd have a different situation. But with, given the staff that we have currently, I think leaving that position open for a while for the sergeants, the newly promoted ones and the one that is currently there to develop skills, I think, is my recommendation to the board.
So what are we asking for? That, that needs to be clear on that.
Just a clarification that I am not going to put out the lieutenant's position. I'm not going to fill it. I'm going to fill the third sergeant instead and go with that model until I see a point in time where we have an experience level, at which time we'd have to re-engage the board because it would be a funding issue at that point.
Right, so you, you want to keep that position, but you just don't want to fund it, is what you're saying?
Correct.
That's all I'm trying to go for. So this is for budgetary reasons, this is why you're presenting it to us?
Yeah, in a sense of direction from the board as well. Yes, both. I think, you know, for me to sit down and do my budget is not all that hard because I can do them different ways. I just want the board to understand at least what I'm seeing from a vision perspective in a three to five-year window and make sure it's consistent with your values and goals as far as that goes.
I have two, two questions. The first one is, knowing how difficult it is to get things refunded once they've been unfunded, does it make sense to not fund this position but to fund it with the thought that those funds will be used for a, for career development? For those who are in these positions?
And there is the need for policy development and certainly a consultant and using a consultant on a regular basis for policy development, particularly in light of leash reform, would be a valuable thing to have some, some liquid for that. If it pleases the board, what I could do is I could do what I've done for the third sergeant's position, which is I just left that delta in the budget. So if I promoted one of these men or women, what would that delta be between sergeant and lieutenant? And just fund that separately and I'll bring it to your attention when we go through the budget and you can make a decision then.
Well, I'm, I'm along the same lines as you. What if we funded and then reallocated if, if needed?
Um, that's what I'm thinking. The second part of my question is, does it make sense for Lieutenant Peach to move over here? The second part of my question is, does it make sense for Lieutenant Peach to move over here and to have this one open?
I think for a spell, we'll gauge, I think we're in the middle of some policy promulgation now that would make that difficult. We've got a lot of internal affairs-type of issues because of police reform and the interaction back and forth with postal. We're a little administrative-heavy in that demand now, but I think I would make that case, I would assess that as we go, for sure. If it looks as though we need that, functionally, it will be that way anyways, because he will be assuming a lot of those duties anyway. But as far as what shift he works would be what would be at odds, and I think I can make, take that as it comes, maybe have him even work two days and two evenings. We figure, once I get this model in place, we have to train sergeants too, so I envision him being outside of his shifts quite a bit while we're doing that. So we may settle into exactly that. I just think in my mind's eye, it makes it easier, at least in a year or so, to have a support services lieutenant, because that is a lot of administrative work, to make the place go around training requirements, and I mean, that is a significant nut to crack. But it's certainly something that I will revisit on a regular basis with Lieutenant Peach, and figure out where these blind spots may be.
Eric, do you have anything?
No, I mean, I think that in talking with the chief, just to make it clear to everyone, the goal is to maintain a two-luutenant police department. And unfortunately, right now, since our only option would be to go and hire from the outside, because we don't have anyone internal who's ready to be a lieutenant, having a temporary situation where we only have one lieutenant and three sergeants, I mean, I think it's fair to say that's a temporary situation, and the goal would be to get through that bridge time and get to where we have a sergeant that's capable of becoming the operations lieutenant. And the second thing is, I mean, what we'll obviously have to do as part of the entire budget process, look at how maintaining an open position, or maintaining funding for a position that we know we're not going to fill, fits in across our kind of town goals and.
That certainly will have.
Yeah, I have to just interject there. If, you know, if we are saying here that we're not going to fill that position, then, you know, I sort of object to maintaining funding in that position. I'm not saying we can't put the funding somewhere else, but I don't want to see it in that position if we know for sure we're not filling it this fiscal year.
And then what is put in place to have that position refunded?
We'll move to that when that comes, but I like to see truth in financing.
I think if that's the case, then what I would want to see is a lieutenant hired, I guess.
I think there is the alternative two to think about, too, is I could look at what that delta even is, and if it, you know, eight or nine thousand dollars or whatever it is, we can use that money as a, for a consultant, and I can fund it that way. That way, there, when we move to the model again, we just don't use some services of a consultant, and we still have the, we have the over, at the bottom ledger is, we're not talking about.
Yeah, I just wanted to be, you know, honest on the spreadsheet that we.
And I do think it addresses more its concern of our transparency as well.
And so, and I, I think that that's the, I think that's the lowest that we should fund it at, which is making sure that we have some money set aside for a delta, so that we move a sergeant up to lieutenant, we're not scrambling to find that difference. But I thought my understanding from the board was you were looking to try to maintain this, the entirety of this command structure, which includes two sergeants and three sergeants and two lieutenants, which would mean.
But I also want to maintain the Townsend first policy as well, because I think that, to me, is the whole reason why we're addressing the situation. And I would like to see a Townsend individual in that position if they are qualified.
And playing around with models about the exact thing, I did the same math when I left the third shift sergeant's vacant. I played around with that model, and there, I may end up having to go, you know, with four grand short, with this short, with that short. But generally speaking, it does take the lion's share of the issue. Now, we're not talking about a benefit load and things of that nature, and that's kind of another animal altogether. But it does, from a salaries perspective, get us close enough that it wouldn't be, certainly wouldn't be beyond the pale to allocate that money for a consultant, which I then badly need anyway, to help with accreditation and things of that nature. And then when we go back to where we can do that stuff internally, we're basically privatizing that position for a little bit, if you think of it that way, just that certain duties in that position and spreading them all throughout the other ranks. So I think there's a way to do with, in keeping all three members happy as far as the transparency that Ms. Morris has suggested, and also keeping the funding close enough so it's not a major ask when it comes time to reinstate.
And to use that delta funding to have a path for the officers that we do have to move up, to train them so that we can move people into that position as soon as.
I certainly would appreciate that.
Yeah, because that's what I'm thinking, too. It's that we need to be able to, I mean, in order to retain what we have, there should be a path for them to be able to move up, and that's important to me as well.
Yeah, no good recruiting policy or protocols can be discussed without talking retention first. There's no question about that. I've brought that to the board numerous times over my tenure, that is an absolute fact. Appreciate it, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for bringing this in.
Did we accomplish what you expected?
Full steam ahead, you'll see my two candidates on the seventeenth.
And I do want to welcome the new recruit, is that what?
Sure, yeah. In fact, what I was thinking I could do is get the kid that just graduated the academy, and I call him a kid because I think it's one of the first post-nine eleven hires we've had.
Oh, okay.
If that doesn't scare you.
Born this century.
Yes. And even check in with the two that. And even check with the two that are getting appointed to see if they could all come in on the seventeenth, and see if we could just introduce all three.
I would like that very much.
I'll do my best to do pop chat. I'll see you guys in a couple weeks, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
All right, moving on to appointments. Yeah, oh wait, give me one second, we'll move on in one second. Thank you.
That to the cruiser?
Yeah.
All right, so moving on to the appointments, and we'll take these in the order that we have them. So, three point one, is there a motion to appoint Greg Galliotta as a full-time firefighter?
I make an appointment to appoint Greg as a full-time firefighter.
Motion to appoint. Sorry.
Did you hear me?
Could you repeat that, please? Yes, you repeat it.
I make a motion to appoint Greg, what's the last name again?
Ayota.
Ayota as a full-time firefighter.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right. Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
A Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly. All right, three point two, is there a motion to appoint Hannah Ridney as a full-time firefighter?
I make an appointment to promote Hannah Ridney as a full-time firefighter.
I can.
Further discussion? Teresa?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
A Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly.
Congratulations, Greg and Hannah.
Is there a motion to appoint Michael DeRoche as an on-call firefighter?
I make a motion to appoint Michael DeRoche as an on-call firefighter.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
A Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. Three point four, a motion to, is there a motion to appoint Wanda Goodwin as an on-call firefighter?
I make a motion to appoint Wanda Goodwin as an on-call firefighter.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All right, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
A Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly. All right. The next appointment is for the water department, this is three point five. A motion to appoint Jessica Worley as the account, as an accounts manager, water technician in the water department, is there a motion?
I make an appointment to appoint Jessica Worley as account manager slash water technician in the water department.
Was that a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Jessica Worley as account manager and water technician in the water department.
Second that.
Any further discussion? Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
A Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes.
Congratulations, Jessica.
All right, the next appointment is for a committee, it's to, is there a motion to appoint Dave Chanel to the audit committee for a term to expire December twenty twenty-three?
Make a motion to appoint Dave Chanel to the audit committee for a term to expire twelve twenty twenty-three.
I second that.
Any further discussion? Dave's going to serve right here, so. Pardon me?
I said congratulations, too.
We need to vote. Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
A Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly. All right, then the next motion is to appoint Dave Vichant as the temporary OPM project manager for the wastewater treatment plant until a permanent OPM is under contract.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Would it be possible to take this in and do this at the same time as four point three?
Sure, we can do that. Are you good with that, Chaz?
Yes, ma'am.
Teresa, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
So let's move that down to four point three, means we're going to be very well.
It's okay, I got it.
All right.
Four point two, so.
All right, we need to, so three point eight, we need to appoint one of us to the capital planning committee for this year. This is for service until the beginning of March, so roughly two months for capital planning for this year. So. I would be willing to do it.
I nominate the chair. I was just gonna, I know, I mean, I did it, I did it the first year that I did, and it was, I don't even know.
I did it last.
But you're very well aware, and there's some changes that I think that you would be very well-suited to put your two hundred and forty-four cents in.
So if there is second to nominate. All right. And I am willing to accept, so how do you vote, Chaz?
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. So capital planning. Talk about this tomorrow. All right, because we have to get back to. Yep. All right, so moving on to meeting business. Four point one is a mandatory referral that we received for five Turnpike Road. This is for a review of the site plan review special permit and a stormwater management permit for a redevelopment project at that site for repaving and restriping of an existing parking lot. And I believe we did look at this last year. The applicant is proposing land disturbance of approximately a hundred ten thousand square feet. The amount of land disturbance proposed is above the threshold requiring a stormwater management and it's zone residential A three. So I think it means that they do need a stormwater management permit.
Yes.
The wording on that is a little funky, but that's okay. So this is just the typical mandatory referral. Thoughts, Teresa and Chaz?
Yeah, I leave it to the planning board.
I leave it to the planning board, too.
I leave it to the planning board. However, I would like to see, since we have two of these for stormwater management, I don't know that we have stormwater management expertise on the planning board. I would hope that they would, yes.
They're putting both after period of you already.
Excellent, that's all I needed to know. Then I think we can say that the OS leaves the decision to the planning board, and I at least welcome the fact that they're doing period here, because I would want that. If I were on then. So what should I say?
We would say, we trust the planning board and their decisions, and have at it.
The selectmen?
You can just not put down, have at it.
I'll leave that out.
Thank you.
That's the best part.
Trust the planning board and their decisions. All right, and I'm going to sign it. Teresa, are you good with that?
Yes.
All right, and the next one is, this is four point two, this is a mandatory referral, also for a stormwater management permit for the water treatment plant. On this, it says, review an application received from Townsend Water Department requesting a stormwater management permit for construction of a water treatment plant and water main improvements located at twenty-five Harbor Trace Road. The applicant is proposing ninety-one thousand five hundred square feet of land disturbance, interestingly, less than the Turnpike Road one, with approximately five thousand five hundred cubic yards of fill. The land disturbance proposed is above the threshold requiring a major stormwater management permit, it's residential A three, and in the aquifer protection overlay district. The meeting for this is Monday, January ninth, twenty twenty-three, at seven thirty PM at Memorial Hall, as is the one for five Turnpike Road. There's a set six forty-five, so just prior. So again, any same comments, different comments?
Same comment, I leave it to the planning board.
Okay, the select and trust the planning board and their decision. So those are two mandatory referrals. The next one is a vote to authorize the town administrator to execute the contract with the OPM after the R two process is complete. And we are also adding to this the motion to appoint Dave Vichant as the temporary OPM until the permanent OPM is under contract. So Eric, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, I would like to speak to kind of both of them together. So as we discussed it, though, many, many weeks ago, back in December, in our last meeting, I put together a request for qualifications for an outside vendor to be the project OPM for the water treatment plant. That was. That was sent out on the central register and posted on the website. Um, uh, it was the deadline of tomorrow, and then not to exceed an amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, so it's still unclear as to whether or not we're gonna get any, uh, qualifications based on those, uh, parameters, but that was the, kind of the, um, the parameters that, uh, we discussed at the last meeting. Um, in the interim, it is, uh, uh, required, uh, that the town have. Uh, so I would like the board to, uh, to authorize me, uh, to enter into a contract with an OPM. Um, assuming that the, uh, one comes in that meets the qualifications of the RFQ, um, and, uh, negotiates a price of under seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, so, uh, this would come out of, uh, a project, uh, we'd have to, you know, take it out of project funds. Um, we would have to, more of a determination about that as we're going forward. Um, uh, and so with the authorization of the board, we can, we can proceed on that without having to wait until the next meeting, which would be my, my concern, I'd like to get someone on board as soon as possible, um. Uh, in, in the interim, and, um, uh, kind of, we, we do have to have an OPM on board for the, uh, bid opening, which is two days from now. Um, for the, all of the five sub bidders. Um, um, my proposal would be that, um, uh, the town, uh, appoint Dave Vichant, who's the water superintendent, to be the temporary OPM um, until a permanent OPM is down, and then the project lead for the town for the remainder of the project. Um, 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 for those who are not aware, um, um, Dave's position is one of, maybe the only one, but certainly one of, of, only a couple in the union that does not, is not eligible for overtime, and, um, it, I, 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 I think that, uh, in my opinion, this, um, work uh, for the, the, being the OPM, and then the project lead for the construction of the plant, does fall outside the scope of his regular duties, and I would request, if possible, the authorization of, uh, for me to, uh, kind of negotiate a stipend, um, with Dave to perform this work. Um, just until the plant is constructed, so there would be a a cap on the amount of time that this technical would be eligible, don't be an ongoing stipend. Um, my, um, um, my initial thoughts were, um, um, yeah, again, this would be funded out of the general fund. My initial thoughts were that we would fund that at, uh, twelve thousand dollars a year in a one thousand dollar a month basis until the project is completed and then it terminates. Um, so this is not a, this is not a three or four or five year project, this is, you know, we anticipated, I think, to be a, a maximum, a two year project. And so that's, that would be my proposal, and, and, um, be interested to hear the board's thoughts on it.
So I guess, um, let's do these one at a time. So let's first do a motion for four point three to authorize our town administrator to execute shoot the contract with the OPM, um, after the RFQ process is complete.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Right, any comments on just that? Okay, so then for a vote, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moshe, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. Okay, the second, um, is, motion is a little bit more than exactly what there, what is there, eh, under three point seven that we moved down to this point. So it's to appoint, um, Dave Vichant as the temporary OPM for the, uh, wastewater treatment plant.
Water.
Same up with, water treatment plant, um, until a permanent OPM, um, is under contract. And to have him continue as the project manager, um, with a stipend of, um, a thousand dollars a month, perhaps, or do we want a negotiated stipend?
I, I don't think that we should really be talking about money until we check with the union to find out what, what they think on it.
Maybe a cap.
Yes.
Would be, we're gonna have to negotiate with the union and.
Okay, so subject to, um,
Union.
Union, um, approval.
So much.
Right, so it's, uh, and continuing as project manager. With a, um, the stipend. That stipend pending, union approval. Does that make sense? Pardon me?
The motion needs a second.
Oh, we need a second. Is there a second?
Not here.
I will second. All right, um, further discussion. And will this, I, I have a question. Will this be part of the, um, monies that are borrowed for that, um, for the, uh, building of the, the treatment plant?
Uh, I believe that the project manager bunch should be
Part of that.
Part of the, the funding for the treatment plant.
Okay. And.
Again, in the sc- the scope of that funding, it would be a relatively small amount, but I do think that it.
And then how does the Board of Water Commissioners, do they have this? Do they need to approve as well, or, or is this, um, us? Do you see what I'm saying?
Uh, that, so the Board of Water Commissioners does not have the authority to appoint an OPM, otherwise I think they would have done it already.
Right.
It's, it's the, it's up to the, to us, to the board, to authorize me to appoint, to appoint either a temporary or a permanent OPM. Um, uh, we could certainly, if, if the board would be more comfortable, we can certainly, um, uh, discuss it with the Board of Water Commissioners to make sure that they're comfortable with it, that I don't think we need.
I, I just didn't know how the process went, because I oftentimes hear that the water department and selectmen. Um, so, okay, I just wanna know how that fits. Um, I wanna say that I am okay with you negotiating that, given that the water superintendent is more than likely the only person in the supervisors' union who isn't, um, eligible for overtime. All the others are. And so because of that, I am okay with that. Provided it is an allowable expense within the scope of the project.
And that, that is absolutely something I will, I will check with, uh, with, with Todd, because I know that he's, he's, uh, much more immersed in this.
Right, I don't know what is, is allowed, you know, what's allowed to be in there and what isn't, so. All right, anybody else, Teresa or Chaz, have anything to say?
Well, I just, I have, I have issues with the fact that this was kind of thrown on us, um, at the last minute. This is something that I feel that we should have been aware of. I feel that this is kind of last minute, arm twisting, um, and I'm not, I'm not, um, I'm not in favor of it. So, that's all I have to say. You know, I know that we need to have an OPM. I just feel like the way this happened in December, and then now it's continuing now. I mean, the, the, the town administrator is kind of bending over backwards to, to make this all happen, and I just, I don't think this is right. Um, and that's where I stand, so. You know, as long as the union needs to be involved, I, if they're not answering, then somebody needs to knock on doors or whatever, but we need to get approval from union before I'll do it, because I don't want union coming back at us saying we're doing something wrong, and.
Absolutely.
So can we add something to this? Can I amend this to, um?
It says, it says pending union approval, I believe, so.
And so can we say that we need to know by our next meeting whether or not this has been approved? I'm just thinking the union and how it's pretty.
We don't wanna drag this on.
Um, they don't really respond very quickly, um.
So I, I do have, I do have a meeting with Bobby on Friday.
Okay, and is Bobby the one? Because I thought he was only doing police.
That's not my understanding now.
Oh, it's changed.
What's not my understanding now is that he is still being wrapped, and that's what he has told the presidents of the, the unions. That's what he told the presidents, uh, uh, the president and vice president of the supervisor junior, which is the only union that we would be worried about for this negotiation.
Okay, so I guess I would want, um, to, for, uh, um, I want, I want two motions. I want a, an, a motion to appoint Dave Vichant, uh, so, I, uh, we have a motion on the floor. Um, but I think I would like this as two motions, one as temporary OPM, and then a second for the stipend piece. Because I wanna, I'll report back on that, on whether or not it's stipend. Um, and that's based on the union.
This is why I feel that this was done kind of backwards, because.
It was, it was late. I, I won't disagree with that.
Can I remove my motion, my? And we can put just a new motion on the floor?
At staff, step.
You can just, you can just amend the motion.
Okay.
The friendly amendment.
Now I'm getting even more confused, because I thought when it came to us, I would like to discuss the motions I had before, and then I, I, I'm gonna ask that we remove it, no amend it, but I thought when it came to us to December, the, the whole reason we're going with a, a temporary, uh, operations project manager was that we basically had to have an operation pa- uh, project manager on the paperwork to have the paperwork filed in January. Is, is that still the case?
That is correct. We have to have an OPM, and I confirmed it with the AG's office. We have to have an OPM in order to proceed with the opening on one, Thursday.
And, so if that's the case, then this plan would have to have union approval before I will approve it, or anybody on this board will approve it by Wednesday.
Money, the money.
The money piece of it, which is why I'm asking for two different, um, motions, so I would like.
This is my bone of contention, because last December, like it was a year ago, but we didn't talk money, and now it's money, and, and that's a part that I feel very uncomfortable with.
Okay.
Well, I, I should take responsibility for that, because I, I, this is, this is not something this is something that I, I, and I apologize, I thought that the water, I, I, I believe the water Board of Water Commissioners had discussed was money.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I apologize, I, I should have brought it up in December, so I, I, it's my fault for springing it on the board this late.
So I want two motions, so that we have an OPM, a temporary OPM for the opening on Thursday. I want the second motion for the payment piece. Um, because if they're pulled together, you're not gonna know by Thursday whether or not the union has approved it.
Correct.
So I, I want Teresa, I would love it if you withdrew your, your motion.
You can just allow a friendly amendment, there's no reason to.
Or, or, okay.
Okay.
So let's amend this motion to be two motions.
Okay.
Um, the first vote, most, vote being a motion to appoint Dave Vichant as temporary OPM for the water treatment plant until a permanent OPM is under contract.
I will make a motion that we appoint Dave Vichant as a temporary operations project manager for the water treatment plant.
Until.
Until a permanent o- operations project manager is found.
Second that.
And do we need to amend with the second part?
No, I would just vote on this.
Okay, so let's vote on that. Um, so Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moshe, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. Okay, so that is, what, three point seven? So our next motion is a motion, um, to provide a stipend to Dave Vichant, um, as a temporary OPM until the permanent is on, onboard, and then continuing as, um, the project manager um, until the, uh, water treatment plant is complete um, with a, a negotiated stipend pending approval by the union. Does that make sense? Is there a motion?
Okay, I'm sorry, Victoria, can you do it one more time? What, what's he continuing as? He's.
Project manager.
All we're voting on is the stipend for the previous motion.
Yeah. Well, this, and, and continuing to the end of the project.
The previous motion was just a temporary OPM until the, um, until the permanent OPM is, is cited. The stipended piece continues beyond the duties of the temporary OPM.
Correct, which is why I don't think we.
Yeah, I don't think that should be in there.
Me neither, because it's not on the agenda. The salary is not on the agenda. What is, what is on the agenda?
And we didn't vote for that yet, to continue.
Right.
Okay, so then I guess my, no motion. Um, my thought is then to speak with Bobby, um, since you have a meeting with him. And let's bring this back on the second.
That I agree with.
Can we do that?
Okay.
So it would be kind of retroact, or do we want a motion to provide us, no, no, we can't, because we have the, have a, by the, so, yeah. So it could be.
Can we just make a direction to Eric to work with Bobby to, uh,
Yeah.
You know, work with the union, yeah.
Remember the union to come up with an agreement and bring such a draft.
Exactly, and bring it back to the board.
That sounds good, okay.
And then that, we can just, and then there could just be a simple vote that's on the agenda to approve the agreement.
Correct, that works for me.
Because we, yeah, we'd have to approve the agreement anyway.
That's right.
Even if we, it wouldn't go into effect till seventeen, anyway, because there'd be an agreement with the union, you'd have to come back and sign. That's the earliest we could have an agreement. Any.
Principles.
Sounds good. Um, that brings that.
Do you remember when I had a teacher that taught me a thing about how the difference between principal and principal? Because the principal is your pal.
That's not a bad way to do it.
Well, I never had a principal that was pal my, I was just saying that afterwards. I, I grew up in the time when they still had paddles on their desk.
You were in the south.
That's dead, that time probably extended a little further in the south than it did up here.
My mom was a biz ed teacher, so she was my principal.
Oh, well, there, yeah, you don't have to worry about it.
I get called to the gym, not to the principal's office.
All right, so we are, um, we're gonna bring that back for approval of stipend.
On the seventeenth.
On the seventh, and that could be, yeah. Yeah. All right, perfect. Um, let's move on to four point four, um, to discuss the thing, thanks, Dave. Um, to discuss and vote on the town and vacant buildings, the old harbor fire station, the old center fire station, um, the Hart Library and ninety-seven Main Street, and this is the survey that, um, Eric put out for the program.
So Hartley, can you allow me to share my screen, please? So I'm, I just wanna warn everyone, I keep getting Zoom messages that my internet connection is unstable.
Teresa and the same one as us, right?
No, I bet you you're on.
I'm, I'm not on, I'm on the, the.
Rec. You're on the.
No, I don't think so. No, I don't think so. I think I'm on those. I'm on the Townsend local. Anywho. Oh, there we go. Okay, I have the ability to share my screen. Let's see. Thank you, Hartley. So let's go to.
You're welcome.
All right, so um. Share. Okay, so um, as I I I believe the board is aware, um, but just to let folks know. Okay, everybody. Yeah. Uh. We put together a a fairly short survey. Back in December. Um, and uh rolled it out on the town's website and um uh uh sending out to all the boards and committees to ask them a few uh relatively simple questions about those uh three. Uh, well, I apologize, ninety seven Main Street did not make it onto this. It's a separate.
Yeah, that's kind of separate.
So this is, this is about the three first properties that were on the the agenda, the old harbor fighter station, the old center fire station and the heart library. Um, and the there were, the the questions were fairly simple. Um, the Harvey Library, what use would you like to see this building in the future? So in the, you know, in the time that the uh the uh the survey has been up, we've gotten two hundred and seventy four responses. Which.
Really good.
That's very good.
Yeah, I I feel like that's a, you know, that's a a. I had surveys that I did in Lowell that got less responses than this.
Wow.
So this is, I I feel like a really good, a really good response. I think that that the the folks got people who are interested to to kind of look at it. We did it relatively simple, so it would only take a couple of minutes. Um, and wouldn't take up half your day. So um, this is a the the a multiple choice question. What would you like to see in this building in the future? And then the there were uh five possible answers. Uh, commercial or residential space, and we gave some examples such as a coffee shop, art gallery, general store, office space. The second was residential. Such as a single family, multi-family dwelling, artist's lofts. Uh, the third was mixed-use space. Uh, such as artists live workspace or building.
You scroll that up a little bit so we can see that line on the bottom there. Yes, yeah, that's good.
Uh, artists live workspace or building with retail on the ground floor and residential in the basement or on a separate floor. And then uh other public use such as your museum or a public office. Um, and then other please specify, which just ask people to come up with their own ideas.
You just got bumped up.
And I just got bumped. Well, it's trying to give me a bigger guy.
You just popped in.
As I say, unstable. She's a therapist, she knows.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
She knows.
We'll keep your notes.
Sorry about that. Um, I will do my best to get it back up as quickly as possible.
What was specified? There were forty five responses.
Sure, so I um, so I wanted to kind of share just the first, the general.
Okay.
Response, which is for the heart library. More than a third of the respondents said commercial or retail space. Um, another um, almost twenty percent said mixed use, which is a retail space with residential on the uh in the basement. And so if you, if you take those two numbers together, more than half the respondents wanted to see some sort of commercial on the ground floor of that building. Which I think is the kind of the significant takeaway.
Ground floor, um, is that the the um?
Not the basement is where the children, I think that would be, I consider that the basement.
You consider that the basement?
Yeah.
You consider the ground floor to be the main floor?
The main floor. So I I think that, you know, given the volume of responses and that kind of response, if that's that significant, there's also, you know, again, another twenty percent of the respondents who thought um some other public use such as museum or public office. Uh, would be appropriate. So you, I can open up the responses here.
The others they specified?
Yes. So, sorry, so I'm scrolling it much faster on my my screen. So. I love the idea of an E D White Museum and Education Center, could have a writing and art center with workshops and museum in one place. Mixed use to provide more opportunities to bring people from the outside of the community.
Some of those are kind of the um, you kicked out again, but what I was gonna say is some of those look like they're the mix of the first one and the third.
And the third one, yeah.
Um, that the you know, it's not one or the other, but kind of a combination of those two.
Right. So again, I do apologize for this, the screen sharing issue.
It's not your fault. Talk to the I T guy.
So a museum for town, the town Townsend, an art gallery, museum or artist's space. Uh, somebody said she uses for Townsend Rec for before and after school summer programs. Uh, communal gathering place, so like an additional kind of meeting room. Uh, I I think it's up there. Somebody said low income housing, E D White Museum, why not sell it? Uh, either used for Townsend's uh recreation department use center or other public office, business off for residential use. The E D White contingent was strong. They came out for multiple responses. Um, a museum, art gallery or artist's workspace, non-live-in. Somebody said you cannot upgrade the septic other than a tight tank unless tied to the septic at Town Hall. Um, so like controlled temperature storage in the basement for town records not in use. Those that are permanent in space, other office spaces on the ground floor. Community youth center and art gallery museum, bullets one and four, a maker space and our technology workshops. A town-run cafe, museum, musical venue with a rotating artist. Um, artist workspaces, studios, retail space. Um, a museum with options for hosting weddings. Any of the above are better than what it used for currently. Uh, concern would be parking.
But we could.
There's, there's options around Town Hall to expand parking.
Right.
Um, and there's also, I think people forget that we have the parking space that's right down the street at the dam.
At Jeff Street, the Jeff.
Right down Jeff Street at at the at the dam, that's that's. As I said, right down Jeff.
And and the.
And the field behind the current, current town parking lot. So I think if we we knew we were going to introduce a larger. But if we knew we were going to introduce a larger uh use, I think there's options to 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 make it work. Besides the public parking that's already out here in the in for Town Hall.
Technically, you're not allowed to park along one nineteen. Everybody, that's.
I was about to say, they do right outside.
You're not allowed to. It's um state rule. Can't park on a number of.
State rules.
Yeah, really? No, not kidding.
No, I know.
The historical museum, community market, a marijuana dispensary, that was the one, only one vote for that. A TV station and studio. So maybe we put T cam in the library. The there, you know, get grants to update it and refurbish it, uh, you know, art gallery, art studio. Anyway, I think you, you know. I think it's a useful tool to get all these ideas because it it um. I think it it uh does two things for us. Number one, it's very clear that the 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 town has a lot of thoughts about the building. They want to see it used and not kind of waste away, which I think everybody is on the board agrees with.
I I agree with the one right there on the bottom, not for living, that part, I.
An art gallery and art studio.
Um, for teaching, working, selling, like not for living. I I think it's the not for living place. I don't see the heart library as a living space.
Sure, and 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 so I think that, you know, um. That is a uh, you know. If you look at the totality of both the comments that were writ- written under other and the people that did made votes, I think the it it's a fairly overwhelming amount of people who thought that there should be some sort of commercial. You know, a retail kind of space there, whether it's, you know, art, artists working and and sales studio space or or something like that. I think there's, there's kind of an overwhelming um trend in that direction, more than half the folks.
Eric, did you get a sense though from the responses that you received that um because it wasn't really clear in the questions that the uh people wanted to kept, keep them as town-owned as as opposed to selling them for uh for for commercial use?
Um, you're you're right, and that that was a, I deliberately didn't make that distinction because I think with the heart library, where it's going to be a challenging building for us to do. For us to kind of renovate um in the historic district on town property that basically would require.
Heart Library isn't in the historic district.
The library isn't?
It is not. I might be wrong, the lease is on, I saw it, but I I don't think that is because we could put um signage on that side of the street, but not on this side.
Of Jeff Street.
But you didn't get any sense, one way or another, that people wanted them to stay in town owned or they'd wanted to see them to become commercial.
No, I think, you know, if you read their responses, I think it was kind of a there are some folks that that wanted to see it remain for town uses. But I think the 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 majority of folks wanted to see it with some sort of what I would consider to be a non-municipal use. Um, and and I think it would be up to us as a town to figure out how to do that most effectively. Um, things like artists work in gallery space or or um um other kind of commercial space like that, that is not that might be more challenging to do in a purely we sell it and you guys run it model. It might require some sort of town ownership and, you know, a certain, well, a certain extended period of a lease for someone to, you know, to operate that there. Um, and that structure is something I think that.
That is a very, very important piece of history for this town. It was the first free library and that was done with all townspeople. Townspeople put it all together. So I I think we, the town needs to retain it in order to make sure that it, the building is being taken care of much more than what it's being taken care of now.
Yeah.
I'm sure that we'd be able to lease out portions of it.
Yeah, if we had it, i- i- if it was retrofit to a use. The the other benefit of having the town retain ownership is we get to decide what the use is forever. You know, if we, it wouldn't turn into a smoke shop or, you know, because we would have to be, you know, we would have retained the control over the use that would be there and what we wanted to subsidize, I basically, I guess is what I'm saying, you know, how we wanted.
In order to to um carry out what the townspeople want for it, we would need to retain ownership of it in order to 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 make those decisions. So I I just feel it's very important that we continue on keeping the.
Yeah, so I I thought that was a really interesting um set of responses. Uh, and now let's go to the uh, the old central fire station. This is the one on thirteen. Uh, near the hardware store. This had you know, and and another very high uh, commercial retail space. Component. This had, uh, you know, uh, another, again, twenty percent, more than twenty percent of people wanted it for some other public use, like it is in a public office. So again, that this is a, I think it's, it's a kind of a telling piece of information. Uh, let's see. Some of the responses are. Uh, this would be a great place for maker space, workshop areas, also shared workspaces that can be used by residents. So many people working around these days, based back community offices and their conference room as well. Um, let's, some of these proposal, a museum for fire, what better place than a fire station? Some people said sell it to businesses in town. A place for youth groups to meet, boy scouts, girl scouts, rail trail, flag committee, youth sport board meetings, et cetera. Want to sell it, long-term lease or sell with historic restrictions, for you such as fire harder museum, these are antique. Steamer and other fire engines equipment. Interactive fire history museum, museum of retractors, which are town, additional revenue to the town, tear it down. Hobby workshop for adults. Condos, turn into a fire museum. In their farmers markets, sell the property, any of the above uses, rather just basically. A brew pub. Right there, um, bread bakery, community market. Another marijuana dispensary, someone.
I bet you that's the same one.
They put marijuana dispensary for everyone else.
Or unless that's the way it's set up. If somebody added, it just continues on with each one?
No, there's a separate, separate series. Apologize, this is.
No, Chaz, I wrote. It was a joke, you were supposed to.
Didn't hear it, you.
Oh, I said, no, Chaz, I had to write it in every one.
Oh, Teresa.
So again, my my unstable internet is making this harder than it should be. Uh, some salad restaurant pizza would be nice to use, if it's in the park, it can be resolved. Fire museum, so um, maker space with artist's live workspace, a brewery. Nothing, leave it alone. I'm not sure that's a great idea.
That would be a great level restaurant.
Yeah, um. Sold to a lot of resources to use for maintenance, some people, the buildings are heavily using town, fire museum, would be idea for the public city of vintage fire equipment, so. So if you take, you know, the dozen or so people in the maybe even more in the in the others and add it to the museum people. You're talking about, you know, another good third of the town that thinks that that should be a museum space. I was wondering if that was something that you could combine a museum with some other use. I just don't know, I, you know, um, probably not if you wanted with the steamer there, but if if, you know, I I've seen, I've seen so many spaces that have what is an effect, either an art gallery on the wall and like a bistro. You know, in the same kind of space, is there a way we could have some sort of creative? You know? Cafe slash museum. I don't know, it's a.
I I I think it's all, yes, I mean, it's all, there's all sorts of things. I believe that there's a lot of um. I mean, that's a, that's a museum type building anyway. That's also part of our history.
Yeah.
But um. What about the fire association being a part of? You know, what would they be interested in utilizing that for some of their memorabilia?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's, there's.
And, you know.
There's a lot we could do with that one.
Yeah.
I think.
Um, and then, uh, I apologize, it's going to come up on your screen very shortly, which is the old harbor fire station. This one, a significant portion of folks thought that this should be residential. Um, which isn't a real surprise, given that it's located adjacent to multiple residential properties. But I also, there also was a significant number of pe- number of people who did mention in the other comments about the fact that it's a historic fire station adjacent to the historic society's property, that it should be, you know. Something should, those buildings should work at concert. Um, um, but that I thought that I didn't, I didn't really expect the residential response with this one. Um, but, uh, you know, we got the um responses, so. A coffee spa, shop or remote workspace, we've been here for office space. Um, sell to a business in town, according to this deed. It must be, according to the deed, the parcel must remain for fire department use, which is a whole other.
Yeah.
Question, um, revanta space for the town, team of facilities and others that don't have an office.
That's an idea.
That's exactly what I thought too.
Idea, I hadn't thought of that.
Um, you know, I I I do wanna. Um. And I know that we we're thinking about, we're thinking about space for town offices. There's also the same possibility that the water department is gonna turn over the old water building to the town when they're done. With it, and so there's likely to be space there. But.
That's true.
That's not, that doesn't mean that that that's a bad idea.
Hmm.
Um.
Well, is that that's not in the historic district, is it, in West Townsend?
No, that is.
So that could definitely be re-done for residential out there.
That's true too.
There's all residential out there.
Yeah.
Well, no, not all. On that side of the street, there there is some commercial.
Right, but I'm saying that 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 would make more sense to be residential up there than.
Look it down, why sell it firefighting museum. Um, remove it, replace it, the lot with trees, that's uh robust. Um. So I, you know, it, I was not, I didn't do any kind of deed research on this parcel before I put this out. So if there is in fact a deed restriction that requires it to be used for some municipal purpose or for some fire purpose. Then it may be, we may be important to think, to shift our thinking about like. If we have to have a one of these buildings remain in fire per for prior purposes. That one has a deed that says it has to, maybe that's the one that we think about turning into a fire museum.
But if that indeed had that on there, wouldn't it, the lease that we had on there didn't mention anything to that effect?
What?
The lease with D C R, you mean?
Mm hmm. That didn't mention anything about that.
But that's because they were being used to destroy the fire um equipment.
They're they're.
Firefighting.
Yeah, their forestry fire.
Um, so that might be why that wasn't in there.
But that's it. I only throw that out as something we would have to determine. We're gonna have to have somebody figure out.
But again, that's that's a historic piece of, and I agree with the comment that it needs to be part and parcel to. The Cooperage, the 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 Gris Mill, I mean, those are all historic properties and I get really. Fired up when people wanna just tear it down or turn it into residential. That's a part of our history as as a town.
Yeah. So I I think, um.
Well, that was an interesting one. The eminent domain.
Yeah, well, I think that goes back to the right. Um. I mean, I I think that that may go back to the original kind of question as to. What, how did the town get it? Were there any restrictions on the way that the town got it, it has to use? Um. There's two things are not in agreement. It was either taken by any of the domain, which means we can use it wherever we want. Or it's taken with a deed restriction that has to be used for for something that we need to keep using it for. But i- it it feels as though some folks feel like there's some restriction on that building that we're gonna need to pursue before we. Um, kind of go forward with any plans.
Okay.
Um, so at this point in time, I think, I'll probably, I'll be, I'll take the survey down. Off of the website and 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 shut it down, I think you're, you know.
I I think it would be nice if you put the results on, when you shut down the survey.
I will, I can, I can.
Down and put the results.
Try to get a link to the results.
So that people can see that.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely appropriate, just to let everybody see these things that we've been talking about, even if they're not at the meeting tonight. Um. Um, so I I I guess the question is. We have this information, we obviously have to do a little bit more research, at least with the with the old harbor fire station to make sure that we know. What we've got.
Right.
Um. Um. Um, does it make sense for us to, or for me? To start thinking about, um. Putting together some sort of R F P to see if there are any entities that would be. You know, given the the responses of the town. Put together an R F P to say, hey, this is what the town thinks that we should do with these buildings. You know, do you have any ideas? Do you have a proposal to come in and affect what the town is like, kind of voted for?
Um, I would, uh, make them all separate. I would do three R F Ps, one for the heart library. One for the um center fire station, one for the harbor fire station. Um, I I think we need to have agreement on what the town wants done, because it's all over um the place. So the question is, do we as the board of selectmen decide what that agreement is? Or do we put out another survey with more limited choices? Um. I see mixed use space, which would include the commercial, the retail, the. You know, workspace. Um, for both of us, museums, those. Um, those being part and the other, the the one down at the, um. The old harbor station, we need to do a little bit more looking before we say.
And obviously, it wouldn't be. I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, is the board would be willing to let me take a crack? At putting together requests for proposals that would bring back to the board before we did anything with it to say.
Yes.
Let me see what I can glean. Can I get some wheat from the shaft of the the things that we got and give some kind of, um. Um. Uh, maybe some shape to a proposal that I think. Both reflects what I I I believe is the board's desire to maintain these very important buildings. In ways that keep them reflecting the importance that they have to the town. While getting some uses in there that might enhance the vibrancy of them as, I mean, anything more vibrant than they get.
I also would like to be able to um incorporate. Um, town properties, I wanna hear what they think.
Sure.
I wanna incorporate the housing authority, how the municipality seems to get left out of all of these types of things. Um, any other board or committee that would have anything to do with with any of these buildings, I think, historic, um. Uh, the historic district. And I would like to be able to have some kind of feedback from the historical society.
Okay.
Um.
Why the historical society?
Because they, if if our intention is to keep all of the integrity of the um the harbor, I'd like to hear what they have to. To say about it.
Maybe the old fire station, at the the old harbor station.
I would like to get as many opinions on this as possible.
I I think they should be involved.
The purpose of the survey.
Well.
Go ahead, Teresa.
Yeah, I I have no problem taking taking a look and and I and I like to see, you know, get their opinion and and I'd agree with Chad's. Uh, as many people should be involved with this as possible, but I also think you that you're gonna get. Which you didn't hear in the survey, that I'm not sure in our current financial si- situation that this is what. People in this town, like there was not, the question didn't ask, is this where we want to see money being spent right now? Uh, which was not the part of the survey, I understand that. Um, so, you know, there's a cost to do an R F Ps, um, so I'd like to keep. Um, that cost in check, if this wouldn't be in in a year that we're just getting past COVID and. And we had to go last year, uh, made it by the skin of our teeth and we've said publicly. You know, that we don't see a way that we're going, oh, it's gonna be very difficult to have a year that we're not gonna ask for an override. Um, I just think, you know, this might, this wouldn't be my priority. Uh, eventually, I hope that it's something that we gotta get, but, uh. Like I said, if there's a significant cost in getting these R F Ps, it wouldn't be where I'd wanna concentrate my my energy. Now, if there was some, uh, some. Uh, way that you do was a combined space that they were, like you said, a residential or a commercial and a thing. And there was a com- combined that you were leasing it and they were helping with the bill, you know, the cost or grants or whatever. To o- 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 offset the cost of those, and that's a different story.
Well, I think that, um, there's two pieces. One is to, um. Get the buildings so that they aren't in over there, which is what they are now. And will continue to, um, fault pieces. Uh, so there's that piece. The second piece is if we were to be able to, um. Uh, fix up the buildings, what happens after there? And that's where the money comes in. As far as are we leasing the buildings to someone? Um, are we, how how is that handled? And that that's a second piece to this in my mind. Um.
And that's why I like, like I said, I think we need to have the planning board and the historical and everybody, as many people as involved. I'm not saying no, I just think that it's it's needs, the survey is very helpful, but I think it's a much broader discussion.
If the other, um, if if all of the committees, et cetera, are done, there needs to be a deadline on feedback. Because otherwise, this will go on forever.
Well, and I also don't want to not do something, and that's historically what the town has done. My concern is, I mean, I've, I I I have been speaking about historic structure preservation since I was elected here. And we need to do something, and we need to do, instead of saying, maybe, yes, I agree with you, Teresa, there is some major problems with with the um. The economy, we're not asking the townspeople for any money right now. What we're looking at is some options. If we put out R F Qs, that that means that outside people are gonna be saying, I can do this for it, and it's not coming out of taxpayer dollars. So I I I think we need to move on something and and sitting on this is we've got the Hart Library that's storing important. Town documents right now in boxes in the cellar. You know, it's it's not doing anything, it's not doing us any good. Um, if we have somebody that's interested in helping us out with these properties. You know, that's that's when we're gonna get down to the nitty gritty on what we need to do, what is it gonna cost, how, what is our contribution to that? And what we need to do to dispense or or sell or whatever we wanna do with the buildings. But I I we got a plan.
And I also just wanted to make very clear that that when I sent out the um the links to this survey. I sent it out to the chair of the planning board and the the chair of the the historic commission.
Mm hmm.
And, um, um, the chair of the of the finance committee, I did it, I tried to and asked them to forward it to their. Respective members so that we would get their feedback along with the, now, I I realize it's not delineated. They don't have a special feedback section, but it's in the.
But I I think that it can be talked to death. And that the purpose of the survey was to get that information. And that going beyond that, although you want everybody's opinion, the way it was sent out allowed for that. And so I I think it's time to look at what came in. And I'm good with having Eric look at that and come up with an R F Q that fits the. The thoughts that I'm assuming came from those committees.
And the residents that were interested, and just to, just to make you make clear to you, Teresa, the, but the idea of an R F P would be. We're looking for a request for a proposal, it would be drafted internally. And then we just post it in the central register and, um, and on the town's website, it would, there wouldn't be a cost. To put together an R F P, um.
Can you just help that educate me? So you're saying R F P, which I'm familiar with, and they're saying R F Q, so. What's the?
It wouldn't be, or or R F Q is a request for qualifications, something we did for the O P N.
Right.
An R P is a request for proposals.
Okay.
So we would be, so we'd be saying, we have, we, the town, own this building, the hard free library. Um, we are looking for proposals from interested parties who would, you know, be interested in coming in. Um, and establishing some sort of, um, and I'm just gonna throw this out. Um, uh, an art studio, a maker space, cafe.
Okay, so that doesn't require architectural diagrams or any of that, like, um.
Not from us.
Oh, okay.
No, that's what we're asking them to do it.
Yeah, so.
Okay, okay.
Uh, the idea would be, hopefully, that there might be an entity, whether it's a nonprofit, or some entity that might say, yeah, this is the kind of space we're looking for. The town would, in theory, be willing to say, we're gonna. We're not gonna charge you for this building, we're gonna give you a lease of the very, 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 very minimal dollars, so you're obtaining the space. For very, without the town recouping any money from it.
Okay.
But you're agreeing that you, private entity, is gonna finish it and bring it up to appropriate standards and maintain it. Um, so they basically would be getting the real estate without a cost to them, but their agreement would be. You've got a fifty year lease and you have to maintain it during these fifty years. The town would be owner, but wouldn't wouldn't cost us anything.
I had a a different thought process in mind, so thank you for clarifying that.
Did you wanna share?
No, I I was thinking more on a R F P that required the architectural design, the nuts and bolts, down to the screws, all of that. And, you know, I've spent, you know, over a hundred, you know, fifty thousand dollars on R F Ps, so.
Yeah, it there, um. Yes, it's but but it's possible to do R F Ps for a municipality without us incurring costs. Um, we're likely not to get. The same R P as if we came in with architectural drawings, or someone knew exactly what they had to do to retrofit the building. You know, they're gonna be less detailed than that, um.
Okay.
And require speculation.
Thank you.
Eric, it seemed like you might have a question?
No, I'm good.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm sure. I just wanna make sure that there's three separate entities, they're not a group thing.
Sure, I would, they would be kind of ve- very similar in scope.
Yeah.
Just with different specific requests for proposals of the specific uses we're asking for based on the different locations. But we could definitely, I mean, there's no, it would actually be relatively simple, because I just draft one and then kind of.
Right, and we would be able to look at the deeds and, oh, excuse me, all of that kind of stuff.
I can do, I mean, it it I can do a deed, a deed, I can myself, I could do a deed, um, deed deed research on the, um. The old harbor fire station and see if there's anything I can find. If I can't find it. And it's not clear, it may be very clear, but if I can't find it and it's not clear, then it's something we'd have to talk to with council about whether or not we want to pursue it. And obviously, we can go any, and we'd have a conversation if, if not to that.
Yeah, the assessors should be able to provide you with information. On that though.
They should, yes.
Yeah, the deeds and all that good stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I do registered deed searches all the time, so.
Okay.
Certainly. Contract.
I just wanna do the town's best interest.
Yeah, and ob- obviously, the idea would be for me to take a crack at it and bring it back and just have a discussion in the seventeen.
Yeah.
About what we think about this. Does this encapsulate what you guys thought, you heard? You know, because it's it's gotta be something everybody agrees on that we we heard.
All right, so do we all agree that Eric takes the data and puts together an R P to bring back that?
I'm good with that.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
All right, so let's do that. I I also wanna talk about ninety seven Main.
Me too.
Yeah, so so ninety seven Main Street, and I I know that I've mentioned it through the chair. Is a property that the town owns that is a contaminated property that's currently under. Yeah, it's it's currently, um, under D A P jurisdiction. Um. Um, I I.
I think we should just put enough for sale.
My understa- my understanding about the way the, um. About the 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 way the twenty one E works, based on my history with the D E P is, as long as we are making continual efforts to sell it. We are not responsible for plenty of contamination, so we wanna, we. I think it's in our best interest to attempt to sell it regardless of whether we know whether someone has a plan to do something with it. If only just to say to the D E P, we keep trying to sell it and nobody wants it to stay out from under our twenty one E, uh, N twenty one E requirements as an. Um. So the question I had was, do we know whether or not it has been declared surplus? Uh, 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 do we know whether or not?
Surplus, I guess we would. We'd be on it.
Yeah, but I, I, I believe we might need to get, um, do we, do we need to get town meeting organizations to completely sell the property?
I don't know.
No, I mean, I, I think, I, I think, when you're, I believe we do. I don't believe we'd be able to, the, the Board of Selectmen acting on its own would be able to, just like you need to get authority to, to lease, I think you need to get authority to town meeting to, to do a property sale as well. So that's a.
Trying to think of, I've encountered that at all.
Like when you, we had to transfer the title of the property from to, to the, to the town, um, before the housing trust that had your town meeting. Like, anything to do with deeds, which touched a deed, or even a lease rights to property, I think the town meeting has that.
However, if you are selling the town, that does not get the town.
You know why?
No.
Because you're not actually selling the property, you're just selling your debt.
Your debt.
There.
Um. Yeah, it's, uh, it, it, I, it might, it might be something that we could do as part of something else we're, we may talk about later. On the 24.
I, I also know that, um, my thought, actually, a year ago, or maybe even it was two years ago, I can't remember now, um, that there's a DLTA for the site assessment to determine the nature and extent of contamination and develop a plan of action, which is part of their grant. Um, and that's a short term. The DLTA is a short term, isn't it?
Are you talking about a DLTA grant from MRPC? No, you want to look at Brown Fields.
This is Brown Street.
With either, um.
This is Brown's Field, Site Cleaner. They have several different options for Brown's Fields.
There are. Okay, when I talked to MRPC, uh, this was beginning early in my term, as a selectman.
Mm-hmm.
They, um, there were two ways they could go, the Brownfield Grant, that they did not accept this property for, um, and said to put it back the next round, which should have come in this fall, or to go to Mass Development, who also does Brownfield Cleaning.
I didn't say cleaner. It's to conduct a site assessment to determine the nature and extent of contamination and develop a plan of action.
What I think the first part of that is already pretty much underway, has been done. The, and the plan of action.
What, what was the plan of action?
The, I can pull it up on the DEP website, it's there. This is one of the ones listed, and you can go back and you can see every document.
What was the plan of action, I mean, see?
Well, they have test wells in the, um, several properties, they have test wells to follow the contamination, to see if it's going on or not. Those have been kind of laid low because nobody owned that property until we got it. So nobody was continuing to look at it. I haven't looked at those documents for a while. The town has no plan of action, because the town's plan of action was to take it by tax title, and then say, um, so that's pretty much.
As far, as far as 21E, there's a, a pretty rigid set of things that you're supposed to do when the contamination is discovered. Um, coming up with a, um, um.
It's never been.
A wrap, which is a response action plan, is one of the early things under 21E that you're supposed to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, um, I haven't looked into the DEP background of the property. I know I have a file with some documents on it, but I haven't looked into it. Um, um. The. I don't think either one of these things precludes the other. Like, uh, if, if we were to put it out to, to, for, to, to, for sale, we would be saying, subject to you taking on all the responsibilities of buying a property that has a DEP contamination on it, and the new owner would be required to go in and comply with the DEP requirements for cleaning.
Wouldn't be required that, to list what we had found on that, or what we've done previous to it, or whatever.
We could, I mean, I would, I, I, what we would do is say, see the DEP file on it. We want to be as open, as transparent, as possible, obviously. Just let them know, this is, there's contamination. The DEP is likely to have better documentation than we are, because we took it after the contamination was done. And so any studies that were done by an LSP that an owner had, um, would have been submitted to DEP as required before we took an ownership, but my understanding is, it's been kind of like.
It was, they were submitting the forms that, so someone assessed the property.
Right.
That was done, and things were being submitted. The state, the guy that owned it, um, kind of disappeared off the face of the earth. And the state couldn't, um, was trying to get the next step to go from the owner.
Right.
But the owner just threw up their hands and walked away, which made it the bank. And the bank threw up their hands and walked away, and then the town said, oh yeah, we'll take that.
So we, that, that's what I'm trying to say. So we took it in that respect. So is there back taxes on it? If we were supposed to take it in, in tax title, we just took the debt, we didn't take the property, or do we have?
Oh, we have the property.
Oh, yeah, I think, I think, yeah, we, I think it was taken by tax title in its entirety, which means that, that back taxes are gone.
Right.
We, we, when you take it by tax title, they, they disappear.
Right.
We are the title owner, but there's a loophole in 21E that says, if you take a property by tax title as a town.
Yes.
And you try to sell it, you are not in the chain of title for having to do the cleanup. So I think we want to keep trying to sell it, even if somebody, nobody bids on it.
Right, so what have we done to try to sell it?
Uh, that I don't know.
Nothing. So what do we need to do to sell it?
We, I think.
That's the question, right?
I think.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get right down to the.
I think we need to get a vote from town meeting that says, we're authorized by the Board of Selectmen to conduct, uh, a sale of 97 Main Street.
Okay.
And if town meeting authorizes it, we, you know, put it out to bid saying, there's 21E contamination by DEP, here's the link to the DEP's website, please do your due diligence.
And this is for the town meeting in April.
Perhaps.
Can we do that?
Um. Yeah, and, and, you know, there's, there's, um, um, when we come to the TA's portion, I have, you know, we have some other things we need to talk about, about town meetings.
Okay, can we add that to it? I want to move forward. I, I, this has been sitting there and not doing anything.
Yeah, and I, 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 I would like to get it in front of town meeting as soon as is reasonably possible.
Yes, I'm 100% for that.
And I, I can do some due diligence on the, um, on the, uh, the title, and see if there's anything unknown.
Okay, I'm good.
I'm all set.
All right, let's go on to the next one, then. The RFP for shared streets and spaces. Um, so I, I've put in the, um, website just today, um, the, I was going to try to share this. So when we get to share. Um, what I'd like to do, so it's an RFP kind of month, I guess, is to put out the RFPs for the bike lanes, and to, uh, get the, um, I'm not sharing this one right now.
No.
Yeah.
Um.
Only your bank account showing.
We. So, um, cost base, and so hardly am I able to share my screen this morning.
Okay, I'll double check.
If I can.
Okay, you're still the co-host.
Okay. Um, so what we need are, it could actually be, I suppose, one RFP, but, um, for all three of these, is mine.
Different sections of the bike.
But for different sections of the bike.
Yeah, I mean, I think when we did the last bike lanes, it was separate locations, but one RFP, it makes sense to keep it simple.
Okay, so. All right, and, um, and we just do it, um. Um, anyway. It's just showing me this, but there's a section at Warren Road, this, um, the section down South Street, all the way to the lights. And then there's this, um, the bike lane piece that's going in along here, you can see those shares. Um, along South Harbor Road, all the way to Ash Street. And they, they separated the cost, and it is in there, um, into three sections. Because we were thinking, oh, we would only paint a certain part of it, like this section, um, and then the other part based on the water treatment plant that's going in. However, it probably makes the most sense just to put it down, and then when they, and then restripe after they pave, whatever they're paving, because we had thought they were paving all the roads, but they're not.
They're not doing curb-to-curb, so I'm not sure where they're going to disturb it.
So, um, I, I think it would be good if we got this out there so that we can spend the Shared Streets and Spaces funds. It has to be all spent out by the end of June.
Right.
This project will take a little bit more than what's available, because there's also a signage piece of this, which we can just purchase the signage from Mass Core, um, and, uh, see if the highway department could put it in.
Right.
As opposed to, um, I suppose we could put it out with the RFP too.
How much are we talking at?
Um. It is roughly 35,000, of which about 28K is available in shared streets, and the rest would come out of what was allocated through, um, ARPA.
Right.
So to get this project done, and it needs to be done by, I think it's June 15th.
Yeah.
For, um, the, for, uh, Mast dot purposes, that they had allowed us to do that. So if I go back, you know, like. Um, if you look in this folder, you can see all the costs, the opinions of probably caused, like this is for, um, left screw this is. That can be this. All right, so. This is for, uh, one part of the paving, so this is South Harbor Road, Ash to Harbor Trace, and that's about 11K. Um, Warren Road, I think, is the one that's most expensive, and it's like 14. And then the part along, it's all in here, I can pull it up. Um, this is the probably ca, uh, cost. This is, uh, South Street, Harbor Trace Road, 119 is 14K. And there, there's an actual bike lane, which is why it's more, so that's 25. And then the, um, the last part is one. And one is the least expensive, 8,345. So 11, 14, and 8 gives you what, 33, and then there's the cost of the signage, which is another couple K. So, um, so we'll be taking some of the ARPA funds, but we'll still have, I think we put 50 in there.
Yeah.
So we'll still have around 40 that could be used for sidewalk engineering. So I think for this one, um, I just wanted direction for, um, Eric to work on the RFP for this, based on what we had done with Kittleson.
Sure.
Um, to get it out there so that, you know, hopefully this work can happen in the April main timeframe.
I'm good with that.
So I don't think we need a motion for that, right?
Totally.
All right, so that then leads us into the Mass Trails Grant, which will not pay for side. Um, so, uh, what I did, I attended the Mass Trails, and you have my handwritten notes on this in the, um, thing, and you'd have to go through and look at it and go to the Mass Trails website. Um, but they do not do sidewalks. And we had thought about this, not fund any sidewalks or base bicycle lanes, but would consider if it is a connection between two parts. So what we have to decide is, do we want to go forward with a map to try to get funding over and above the 40K, um, for the sidewalk that would connect from the, um, second section of the bike trail to what's considered the fourth section, the one on the other side of Shepherd's there, that goes in back behind, um, Anne Ford, to connect to the trail that's being worked on now and grown. Um, so this is one possible source of funding. They fund trail systems, so we could get around it by saying it's a connector. But if we're going to do it, we have to really work hard for the next three weeks to get this in, and we don't have grant admin anymore. Um. So what do you guys think?
Well, we, we know that the funding we have is not going to be sufficient to fill that gap. So that means at some point in time, we're going to be looking for some sort of additional funding.
Right.
You know, uh.
One option is, I mean, can you put sidewalks on the tip? Just sidewalks?
I honestly don't know. I don't know that I've ever seen it, but I don't know, I don't look at the tip that detailed enough to know what.
I've always seen, I've always seen road.
Yes, right way.
Roads.
Sometimes that includes some, you know, I believe streets kind of sidewalks, but.
Good streets, maybe that's what we should do.
Hmm. Is this feasible to get it done on the budget during, on my budget, during the timeframe? We have to have it in?
February 1st, I think, let's do February 1st, 2023, the first. It's the first Wednesday in February each year.
Exactly.
And you can ask for 60K for local projects, 500K for regional and statewide, so this would be a local project. But added to the 40K roughly that we have, that's probably enough. This is probably an 80K kind of thing. Um.
I mean, it, it's probably worth taking at least a preliminary cra, like a crack at it. Um, if only to ask them, if they say no, what their feedback is, or what they said no.
Would we be able to get some kind of assistance with, um, helping writing this with, uh, just want to put, um, rail trail?
Oh, uh, probably.
So if we had assistance from them, I think it's probably feasible for us to do this. And I'm sure that they have a good idea of what we're looking for. Huh? Oh, yeah, I know, but, um, I mean, given we don't have a grant writer, and given that they have a lot of expertise with the grants that they've already gotten, and if they can help us out with this, I would say let, let's move forward with that.
Okay. We did put it together last year with Benny.
Yeah.
Put it in for, um, shared streets.
Yeah.
And got pushed back of no. Um. I mean.
That's not pushback, that's a stop sign.
Right, Benny, Bill and I.
Yeah.
Um, worked on it, Benny did the writing mostly, and Bill, Bill did a lot.
Um, so you have that already, so it's really re, reconstituting that?
We. Actually, we met with NASTODS, we did, we know a lot more now than what we did know because of the work we did for the, when we abandoned that and went to the. Harbor bike lanes.
Right.
Um, we know a lot more now than what we did. We know that we can go over that call for it, in other words.
Right.
We got the okay to do that, and that was one of the questions. So, um. I'll talk to Bill.
The Culver, you mean over in Minnesboro?
Yes.
Okay, and we can go over that.
We can go over.
Ooh, yeah, we did get that, that is one good piece of information we got from NASTODS.
Can, and so it sounds like it's feasible then?
Yes, uh, uh, uh. A shared use path is not feasible there.
Hmm.
Um.
Not wide enough.
Uh, right, a sidewalk is feasible. There.
Maybe a wide wall.
A wide wall, right. That's what.
I just made that up. Clinging the.
But I, I, I'm, I'm just saying that we, you, you've got a lot of material already, so it's really just kinda adding on what you have and, and.
And.
And submitting it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll talk to Bill Rideout and Joan.
Thank you, Bill.
And see what we can put together, it's yet another really quick one, and they have a mess, the thing about that is, they have a Mass Trails Grant right now. That's what they got to do the third section.
Correct.
Of the rail track. Um. They, I think they wrote it down here, don't expect to get a, um. Uh, it's a reimbursement grant, A, but that's okay. Um. Because we do have ARPA funds that will.
Can be reimbursed for.
Right. Um. Uh, she did say, probably didn't write it down. That if you got one, don't expect to get one again. Um. So it would have to go in some town. But I can get help doing.
Hmm.
Okay, I'll see what I can go, put together for this.
It must be in supportive project.
Yeah, alright. Yeah.
I'm, I'm good with that. Teresa?
We lose now? Okay, I'm gonna stop my share. Now I can see, Teresa, do you have thoughts on this?
There we go, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm good with that, I had it go on mute, my husband came in the room.
Okay, so I'll, I'll see what I can get together for this happening. Um. Let's. Alright. Uh, Ashby Elementary Feasibility Study for North Middlesex, did everybody see that? They are borrowing, and Eric, jump in here if I'm not saying this right. Um, the district is borrowing three hundred thousand. The school committee voted for that. Um. Uh, and they will be borrowing that. To, uh, do a feasibility study for Ashby Elementary School, which does need to be done. Um. So, uh, they, um. They voted it. So i- if I see this, right, if we are going to put it out for vote, if we so choose to put it out for a vote to see if the town would like to support that. This is my interpretation of this. Um, then we can put it on a special town meeting, but it has to be within sixty days of their December twelfth vote. And we just so happen to have a special town meeting coming up. Um, however, the warrant was already opened and closed for that. And posted. So, uh, I'm not sure where that stands, we can also. Um, put a. Make our approval conditional on a prop two and a half that exclusion. Um.
An override is what.
An override, yeah. A prop two and a half override. Uh, for, um. Approval on this. So. One thought was to put this article and the override. On the upcoming special time meeting, because we do have a special town meeting on January come. We would have to open and close the warrant and, and add this to it, and then we post, or.
You know, I was about to say, so I did talk to Adam, and we can't do that.
We cannot.
We cannot open and we cannot reopen the already posted warrant.
Okay.
That.
Cause it's continued and.
Right.
Right.
We're still, we're technically still in the middle of that meeting. Um, however, there's nothing that prevents us from not having a second. Special town meeting also on January twenty-fourth.
On the same day.
On the same day.
It's separate. From.
It'd be a separate.
We already have, but we can open and close that.
Yeah, so. Um. Um. We, we, it would be, so I, I, I did. Like, I emailed Adam, Adam. Without prompting, came with the same idea, which is we could have, you could have a second kind of meeting.
Hmm.
Um. All that, especially such a time meeting on the same day, in which case. We, we would need to post it. Fourteen day, oh, by the ten.
Okay.
Which is next Tuesday.
Hmm.
Um. The last day to register to vote for the special time meeting would be next Friday.
Um, do you mean the sixth? Or do you mean?
Next Friday, the, the.
Following.
Yeah, following Friday, the thirteenth, I think. Um, so there is time, after talking to the clerks, to do it and get it posted legally a second. A second special time meeting for that date.
Okay. And I, if I'm reading this correctly, if we don't place it on the town meeting warrant, then by default, we said yes to it.
So. Are we taking comments at this point?
Um, absolutely.
Um, that's where I have a bone of contention, because this was voted on. By the school committee. With. Full knowledge that this was supposed to be acted upon with the town, with the town meeting. Within a sixty day of their vote, correct?
Hmm.
And this is the first time that we've seen this, it was sent out December thirteenth.
We got it December twentieth. You can see the stamp, received December twentieth.
Okay.
Board of Selectmen. So.
So, so I, I, I have. Major issues with that.
But, yes, but it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Is what I'm saying.
I, I understand that, I'm just pointing out fact, I want this on record. To say that this, this was kind of like a big surprise, but this also says to me. That, um. They're also kind of telling us. We might need to condition this for proposition two and a half.
Well, if we so choose, this is what we need to do.
Right, so I just.
Because it is gonna be part of their budget, they're, this three hundred thousand dollars, yeah, will be part of their budget, and. Whatever percentage of the. School budget is Townsend's part.
Right.
That same percentage of the three hundred thousand is what will be in their budget.
I get it, so that, this, what I'm saying is the school is telling us how the town should do their business, is what I'm saying. That's how I get it.
Well, we are fortunate in that we do have an upcoming special town meeting. And we could open a warrant tonight. Put this word, you know, to put this on it and close it tonight. Would we do that? Um, and then sign it. Next week on the.
Seventeenth.
Um, no, no, no.
Both next Tuesday.
Yeah, right. So we would have to open, close, vote to sign. Um, when it's prepared and to post on the ten.
I'm prepared to do the motion, Teresa.
I'm prepared.
Can I throw one thing out here?
One thing out there.
Only if it's positive.
And I, I'm positive that we could put ninety-seven Main Street on the special time meeting as well.
That's my question.
Well, then let's do that.
Yes.
A vote to authorize the board of selectmen to. A warrant article to authorize the board of selectmen to dispose of that.
Yeah, that would be our second item on that one, yes.
Okay, with that, Teresa?
I'm okay with that.
Alright, so. Um. Is there a motion to open a special town meeting? Uh, to follow the existing?
Actually, I think we want it.
Separate.
Before the, the continued special time meeting.
Oh, we do?
Just for. Ease of kind of like. It will be easier to, to administer that way.
Alright, so will, we, um. Open a warrant for a special town meeting on January twenty-fourth at. What time?
Six fifty-five.
Six fifty-five P M. Um, that has. Two. Um. Articles. One being, um, the, well, maybe it's three articles.
No, it's two, there's. The article is just the, is the, the member town article. Um.
And it includes the.
And then the, I'd be writing up the motion, which is what you say aloud, we'd be saying aloud and adding the, the language for the debt exclusion.
Okay, so.
At the end of the.
One warrant article would be for the, um. Three hundred thousand borrowing by North Middlesex for the Ashby. Um.
Feasibility.
Feasibility study, Ashby Elementary School feasibility study, and including a prop efficient two and a half override. Um. And that vote could be held during the annual town meeting, right?
No, with special.
No, no, no.
Prop two and a half override, no.
Yes.
I think we counted it and then it, the, the last day that we could hold a vote on the prop two and a half override is the day of the, of the special election.
What special election?
Well, I mean, sorry, the April election.
The April election.
It has to be on the ballot, and the ballot, the last day could be on the ballot is the day that we're having there. Yeah, so that's just luckily, just lucky, it just happened to be ninety days.
There's a reason.
So the first warrant is the. Uh, first born article is the feasibility, the three hundred K for the, um. Feasibility study. And the prop two and a half override for that vote.
Yes.
And the second is to dispose of. Ninety-seven Main Street.
Second. Sorry, Teresa.
That's alright.
Oh, was I the first?
Yes.
Did I make a?
But I can, I can just say, so I move. So, alright.
Alright, um, any further discussion?
Um. Yes. I would also like for the, the board to have the opportunity to talk to our, um. School board representatives at some point. I would like them to, to come and talk with us about what's going on, because again, this, I never saw anything about this coming up, and I think that our school board. Needs to be. More informative, they need to inform this board of things like this well before, yes.
Okay, so that is, um, not part of this motion, but it's a separate request.
Yes.
Alright, so we.
I do have something else part of this motion, Madam June.
So, let me just write this down, when do we want them to come? We should see if they are available. For our January seventeenth meeting. I, I think we asked them.
We have.
Okay, um. Alright, uh, Teresa, uh. For this, um, warrant. Um, motion.
So. With this warrant. Right? Is this subject to, if two, uh, two out of the three towns, it passes no matter what?
So, uh, generally speaking, that is the way our, the regional agreement works for everything with the, with the, with the school.
So, my concern is. Having this warrant attached to, automatically attached to an override. Cause if two towns put it in as an override. Then it's automatically, we have to do, if some money shows up. So out of thin air somehow, then we would still have to use an override to fund it.
Well, I, I actually think that's actually a positive thing, because.
Okay.
If we, if, if we as the town vote. If we don't do anything. Then we are not setting it up for an override. So even if, if, if Ashby and Pepperell don't do anything and they say yes, and we don't do anything, we're saying yes, that we've just basically agreed to add that additional. Money without the possibility of us getting it on an override.
Right.
Um.
Okay.
At least with this, we do this process. We, gives us the possibility of, one, giving the town notice that we, there is an override likely coming for a school issue. And two, to have an override already set up, override question already set up. You know, i- i- if that's something that we need to do.
So, tell me, what's the process if we go forward with this and we vote for this? On town meeting. And it passes and we, they agree to it, so technically they're agreeing to spend the money, and then in April. They. Don't pass the override, the override doesn't pass, what happens then?
It's conditional.
It's conditional.
And on the override, the vote, yes, would be conditional on the override passing.
Yeah.
So, um, if the.
So they couldn't go for, forward with this study until April.
Townsend will be in now.
Correct, it has to, Townsend's portion of it has to have a town vote. In the affirmative and a ballot vote in the affirmative in order for it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah.
Andrea, do you have a camera? Could you put it on?
Yes. I don't exactly understand why. The school is doing this. Um, when we have made changes or needed studies in our grade school or middle school. We have had to do it and absorb it within our budget. It seems to me that Ashby should be doing this study. And going on, the thing we share is the high school, but the towns are responsible. Generally, for their grades, for their, you know, lower schools. And in this case, we're paying for. Another town's lower school.
And Andrea.
Not a shared expense at the high school, I don't understand.
I think that you need to take it up with our, uh, school committee members, because this was voted by the school committee and. All of Townsend's school committee members voted yes. On this. So if that was the case, I. I, I mean, all I can say is the school committee voted this, and that includes all of the towns. Uh, representatives to the school committee.
Yeah, but they can.
But what was their vote? They voted to spend that money, but you, they also voted to have it split amongst the three communities?
That's the way it happens when anything like this, that is a joint expense is jointly.
No, it's just high school, just, that the only one that's a joint expense is the regional high school. Andrea's right, it's kind of late in the night and I'm not feeling well, but she's right, we've nev- I've never had them split. They, all committee members vote to spend the money because it comes out of the school budget, but it's, it isn't spread amongst all three, all three towns. Every school committee has to agree to spend the three hundred thousand dollars, but it doesn't, the Pepperell and Townsend. Doesn't have to spend that, uh, you know what I mean?
Teresa, you received the same letter that I received and Chaz and Eric, and where do you see? That it says. Um. That Townsend isn't. Um, required to do that, because I don't see that at all.
It wouldn't be in that letter, it was, it was part of the agreement to form a regional school district.
Says the letter, Andrea says, the letter is to notify the board of selectmen as required by the regional school district agreement. And by chapter seventy-one, section sixteen D of the general laws. That at the, at the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee Meeting. Blah, 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 when, when they held the meeting, that's what they did, so they're saying that it's because of the regional school district agreement and by chapter seventy-one law.
Well, perhaps that's a problem, perhaps their, their council is interpreting the dis- the, the, uh, district thing differently than ours.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Is this the regional school district agreement, is this the new one that they came up with that we haven't?
That one hasn't been ratified, so we've been under the pre-existing agreement.
And the pre-existing one, I don't, I mean, I. I know somewhat of it, but I don't know in detail what the. What the provision is for it, but I'm. Counselor, I'm more concerned about chapter seventy-one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
We can still go forward with it, and if we find out anything differently, they, then we can question it. I, I did.
I, I just. State that the approval is expressly conditioned upon a vote of the town to exclude the amounts required to repay the town's allocable share of this debt. From the limitation on local property taxes. And because of that, I believe that. This, whether it's legal or not, Andrea, under the agreement. What I do know is that, and I expect that they have checked this out and that they are correct. We will be um on the, we will have agreed. To pay our allocable share without the vote of our citizens, without an override vote. If we just ignore this and don't put it on.
I agree.
What do they mean by local taxes?
Can I throw out one, one thing, which is, I, I do wanna. Note that there's a difference between the capital expenses to do the work at Ashby.
Yes.
Which would be borne by Ashby because a hundred percent of the, the students in that school go to Ashby. And the district expenses to do a feasibility study. Which are engineering costs that I, I'm just, I'm, I'm just not sure, and I will be honest, I, I did send out this request to town council. So, um, but it was late in the day and I ha- I haven't heard back from Adam as to, as to the specific questions. Note, we will be, we would, i- if we find out that the answer is Townsend's not responsible for a dime of this. We will know before the town meet, the special town meeting would be able to withdraw that warrant article. Saying we found out from town council that we're not any responsible for it. Or we've confirmed with the district.
One other thing, maybe as a long-term look into. If we. Need something significant done at one of our local schools. Will this new way of looking at things make us have to go through the school committee to do it?
This is a.
Will our future projects be presented this way in our local schools?
But Andrea, I'm gonna assume here that because they're going to take this three hundred thousand dollars and put it into their budget. And we are, are voting our budget, their budget, so we have to be, we have to take a vote on whether or not. We want to take or accept the liability of the three hundred thousand within their budget. Cause their budget is something that we have to approve at town meeting, correct?
Yes.
So.
And that's where we'll see that.
That's where we're gonna see it, but this is, if we don't act, that's where we're gonna be seeing it and when it gets to town meeting, this three hundred thousand is gonna be in their budget regardless.
And if we.
We had, well, for them, that would be better, cause if it just appeared in their budget regardless. Then it wouldn't have to be spent on a specific purpose and they would just have a three hundred thousand dollar increase.
Right, which we wouldn't.
Not like, yes.
I think we would be making a mistake not to put this forward.
Oh, I agree.
So I, I, this, this whole business strikes me as just fishy as hell.
Okay, thank you Andrea, all right Eric.
I did get an email from Nancy Haynes. As a follow-up to the letter. That said, um. Hope all's going well, I wanted to reach out to you regarding the details of the Ashby Elementary borrowing votes, who had all the information. The district school committee voted to borrow the funds for the Ashby, Ashby Elementary feasibility study and O P M services. The member towns have the option of taking this to a town meeting within sixty days. The town of Townsend decides not to hold a town meeting, the borrowing is deemed to pass after the six-day window. The vote requires the three towns unanimous approval in order for the article to be passed, as this is regional school debt. In the past, some towns decided not to take a vote into town meeting if there wasn't a major impact financially on them. The regional agreement requires that the town with students enrolled in that building be assessed for any capital costs. So the capital costs are definitely gonna go to Ashby because we don't have anybody in that building.
Correct.
But this is regional school debt for the feasibility study, so I think that's the distinction here. Is we're just talking about our share of the three hundred thousand, not our share of the, however many millions of dollars it's gonna take to fix the Ashby Elementary School. But it still is our share of the three hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about.
By the same token, wouldn't it be Ashby that would know? What they need to do a feasibility study rather than the school? I mean, rather than school committee?
Now, this is a regional school district.
Yeah.
Issue.
It's a, that's a, that's a very good question. I don't know how in the past the towns have dealt with. Their individually owned elementary schools, cause each town has an elementary school that they own. As opposed to the town, the district-owned schools. Whether, if there's ever been a significant deficiency at Spalding, that the district has done a feasibility study on it, I, I, I just don't know that. Um, obviously, in any district-owned schools, it would be moot because they're, you know, they're, they're all. All different kids from different towns are all going to the middle schools of the high school. Um. But for the, for the elementary schools, I do think that there's this clear differentiation between. That town being as responsible for the capital costs alone. And everybody being in the same boat for a feasibility study.
Well, and we're part of this shared debt, if they're taking this on as debt, then we would be responsible for our portion of it.
Well, it would seem to me we would be, we should have been consulted then. Previous.
That's what Chaz was saying. That's what Chaz was saying. And that this came in on December twentieth. Um, in, in any event, we have a motion on the floor to open the warrant with those two articles.
Thank you.
Um.
Thank you Andrea.
Um. So are we ready to vote on opening the warrant?
Yes.
So could I have a roll call vote to open the warrant for a special town meeting on January twenty fourth at six fifty five with the two warrant articles?
Teresa A. Moles, yes.
Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right, so um now. We need a motion to close the warrant, so is there a motion to close the warrant with those um two articles?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, we need a roll call vote. Teresa, how do you vote to close the warrant?
Teresa A. Moles, yes.
Sexton Marini, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes.
So that's considered now the special, special?
That is.
Yes, we've been calling it that.
Special, special. All right.
So um I will reach out to, when, when I have. The language for the warrant articles, I will reach out to. You each individually for signatures.
Thanks.
I'll let the clerk know that we'll be planning to have it posted on. Um. Uh, uh, and notice on the tenth, so we can do it on the twenty-fourth, um.
All right.
Can I, while we're talking about the special time meeting, can I bring up one thing?
Sure.
Um. Uh. I think it might be useful for us to split the uh signage. The electronic signage around town.
Oh, I think, yeah, we need to do that.
Rather than later.
I will be in tomorrow and we can grab all the signs we need and the dates that we need, yes.
Cause I.
I would like to put up one up for the water department meeting that we have on Tuesday. Uh, to announce that and then right after that to put it up for the um.
Special, special, special.
If people signing, are we gonna have Zoom for the meeting?
Oh.
It's in the great, I think you're doing it in the great hall, right?
Going in the great hall, there will not be a Zoom, no, it's too hard to manage a Zoom.
Okay.
Um. And people think that if you're there on Zoom, they can participate in the meeting and they cannot. Um.
Do they count calls to quorum?
Pardon me?
Oh, you're thinking about the special town meeting?
Yeah.
We're not Zooming special town meeting.
Yeah.
I, I'm just asking to, for general knowledge, if there was a Zoom, does it count towards the quorum?
I don't, I do not believe that those, those rules are continually are, are still in effect after the. Emer- state of emergency was lifted, but I will double check and let you know.
I think that this is, I think that we can. Um, but we're probably too late for it, um, request to reduce the quorum, I think that one might be still in effect. There was a way to reduce quorum. Um, for just that meeting, um. But I don't know if that one went away too, so.
I can let, I can let, let's know via email if I find out anything about that.
People on Zoom count for quorum, then they would have to be able to vote. And there would have to be some mechanism for that and we do not have that.
Okay.
Um, I, I would be negative on Zoom for.
It'd be a challenge.
It would be, oh, it's hard enough to just do those rooms that we did that one time and that was, that was a lot of work.
Right.
A lot of volunteer work.
So, okay. Um, so have we closed the warrant? Yes, we did. All right, so we've taken care of that, where am I at? Uh, the L T A opportunities and timeline, um, again, this is uh. The first round um is due midnight on Tuesday, February seventh. So we have a little bit of time to discuss, but not a lot of time. Um, we would need to approve on the first meeting in February, which is what, February second or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right? I can't. Uh, no, our first meeting is February seventh. So if we're. Um, and that's the deadline, midnight on February seventh, we've done that before, had to uh. Get it in after, um, you know, cause the Board of Selectmen has to sign. We have done that before. Um, just to give us a little bit more time.
Well, it's possible, maybe you could authorize them to stay up, so we could. Do it sometime between them, the seventeenth and the.
Um, so what I think we need is on the seventeenth, the um possibilities for the D L T A opening. Um. Usually the planning board. And, and then us, sometimes housing, have come up with them.
I have a couple more options.
Pardon me?
I have a couple more options.
Such as?
Waste management.
Waste management, oh, that's good.
Develop waste contracts that are physically, environmentally and otherwise beneficial to the community.
Okay. That's a good one.
When's our waste contract expire? Are you saying the expiration is four?
Mm-hmm. I'm pretty sure. And we know before the health is doing that that.
Well, there's other Board of Health ones, but that's number one.
All right.
And what are your other options that you have?
Um. Um, under um public health best practices. Assess opportunities with other municipalities for shared public health services. Including infectious disease surveillance and follow-up retail food establishment inspections and recreational camp inspections.
Okay, how about under transportation? Complete streets covering. Look at what we have, this is page fifteen, active transportation. Um, we are certified through Mass Star. But it's the regular and routine inclusion of complete streets design elements, in other words, back in like twenty seventeen. The town put in for complete streets and nobody has looked at it or touched it since. And with everything that we've done with shared streets and the bike trail being in now. Um, I think we should revisit that.
Okay.
Um, so that's another one.
Which one under eleven?
It's under eleven, active transportation.
Okay.
The first best practice, page fifteen. Um. That might be a, you know, for them to review that, taking into consideration the bike lanes that we have put in. Most of the bike lanes that are incomplete streets are down around Spalding Street and the high school. And quite frankly, my opinion on all that, we do need bike lanes down there. But I think we should consider making the main entrance to the high school off of Proctor Road. Putting in a rotary at Proctor. Um, and that way there wouldn't be a backup. At the main entrance to the high school if it were on, as it is on one nineteen. That, I, I think the main entrance should be on the back because otherwise, when the school buses are going. If you put in a rotary there, that just whole thing needs to be looked at.
Yeah.
And complete streets is part of that.
Yeah.
Um. We just need to do something there.
That is an area that needs attention.
The other one is to make us a housing trust.
Well. That's all.
And we can put in two.
Yes. That, I would, I would.
The housing choice committee to me is a crucial one, cause it opens up some other grant opportunities. And it, you know, it's the, the housing choice grants or that's the.
So when to go?
Yes.
That, that is something that I submitted to the Board of Selectmen back in two thousand fifteen.
Do you still have a copy?
I have everything I submitted to them.
That's, yeah.
And what we need and what we don't need.
Yeah, and so bringing housing choice to me, just for the housing choice grant opportunities. Just opens up another avenue of, of us, cause the, you know. Give you master plans with those grants you can do. You know, I know you already have a, have a housing production plan, but like, there's so many things you could do, it is.
So I think the planning board was interested in economic development, then, were they not?
Um. I had, we do have a planning board rep too, but um. I was looking at creating opportunities for engaging diverse stakeholders in economic development efforts. Look at priority development.
Which page?
Uh, this would be on page eleven. Under section five.
Okay.
Um, priority development projects, improve local permitting processes, they're in the process of looking at some of their um. Uh, bylaws and stuff. Uh, and proactively address obstacles to housing accessibility and affordability. Which is something that I think they're working on now with the meetings that I've gone to.
Is it number four, the fourth one down, for this practice?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And I guess, looking at that, this local permitting processes, we did online permitting.
Where is it?
That's what I wanted to know, what's the status of online permitting?
So. Um. We.
It's been a year and um, it's been six months.
Yeah, so it was shortly after I started that I think. Eric reached a determination of which vendor to go for.
Hmm.
And so that was, that determination was made. Um, training started and then the, kind of the backend piece was. Setting up the, the, the online vendor with one of our, with it, with a. Payment, we have to, we have to have a contractor, like payment provider. And so we had, we are, we had two payment providers that we used and so we asked the online vendor. Do you work with any of these payment providers? And they said, no, we don't work with either of those payment providers. And we said, well, would you be willing to talk about working with one of these payment providers? And they said, sure. So they started having meetings between city. I can't remember the name of the payment provider, anyway, vendor for online permitting and the power payment provider vendor started having discussions about. You know, figuring out a way to, that they can work together. And after a couple of months, they came back and said, yeah, that's not gonna work, you're gonna have to find a different. Payment provider. So then Melissa had to sign up the different payment provider for the treasurer's office, which she did. Sign up with another one that this, that does work with this vendor, neither are we. And now we're at the process where we have started to accept, like the payments are set up and so that it's going along.
Okay, so do we have anything that tells people how to use this? Is there a step-by-step, is there?
I have not, I have not seen it, so I can certainly um, uh, check with Eric and see, you know, I know that he was. Chomping at the bit and was hoping this payment issue would get solved sooner rather than later. Um.
Okay.
And I know that, you know, in, it was, it was in just the beginning, I think it was in the beginning. And I know that, you know, in, it was, it was in just the beginning, I think it was the beginning of December that, that Melissa signed the. The. Payment agreement. Payment agreement.
Okay. So recently.
So we can start processing. We need a rollout. We need something. We need to. Yeah. Print page of the, of the website and I'll talk to Eric about.
Okay.
About that.
Alright, so, um.
I also want to throw one more out there, Madam Chair, if you don't mind. Um. I know that the planning board is looking at mixed-use developments and that kind of stuff, and it says adopt zoning for mixed-use development, including transit-oriented development. That we can also kind of tie into the M B T A stuff. The T O Ds, yeah. Yeah.
Where, where is that?
That is on page eleven. And it's one up from the bottom of the, that section.
And we don't have a. Transit sign. So if you look under active transportation on page fifteen, the second one. The very last one, final page. So what I think is that, um. The planning board should. Determine which one they want. Um, and uh. Someone should talk to, what to help. Find out about the. Trash. Contract.
Because we could only do two, right?
We can only do two, and so I think that might be. Uh, oh. To look at the best ways to do trash here in Townsend.
I think it's gonna be a huge deal when the contract has to be renegotiated. Every community that I'm aware of that has had to renegotiate in the last three or four years. And seen their costs increase significantly because of the. You know, the, the troubles these businesses are having, getting drivers and, uh, you know, what. They're getting much more stringent about. You know, textiles getting via the trash and, you know, it's a. Excluded. But the cost is going up, so get, getting them some tools to help them. Um, you know, get our costs as low as possible would definitely be. If you. So you're agreeing? Yes. Okay. I'm sorry, it wasn't obvious. I was kind of being very neutral at my time.
Page ten, second one under waste management, correct?
Under waste management, the second one down.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and then the planning board can come back with the housing and economic development best practice if they want, or whatever else it may be. Um, the transportation piece we're kind of rolling with anyway.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, although I would love to have our complete streets thing looked at.
Well, and then the M V P implementation is the other part too, but.
That needs done too.
It, so, yeah.
Um, we just need. Alright, so. Okay, so on the seventeenth, we should come back with our D L T A. Uh, things, and hopefully there will be one from planning board, one from the board of health. Oh, and while we're on detail, Aaron said that she should have, uh. Housing piece.
Okay.
So that's.
What housing piece?
With the L T A grant that's currently out there, where they were looking at those six properties for us and giving us our, um. Their thoughts. Our plan going forward. They are giving us our plan going forward. Alright. Um, I'm moving on to four point nine, and someone else has something on the D L T A. Alright, four point nine is the MassDOT School Speed Feedback Grant. I think we should go for it. For Hawthorne Brook. North Middle Sacks and for Spalding School. To get the, this is your speed. Flinders that they, um. You know, will provide for free, we have to install. And they're solar powered, if I remember right. And what was there, correct? I think so.
Highway can put them in or?
Highway would have to put them in.
Yeah, but they, they.
They will provide the, the. And all that for free. Um, so.
Those things are, in, in my opinion.
Oh, okay.
I think those things are super effective.
You think they are?
Oh, yeah, they have the, they have the, like, the street that my house is on, they have them coming both ways. And. It, you, it's a, the, the change in the color of the lighting and the flash, like, it, it. Makes you more aware of your speed and. Slow down.
Slowed down. Um.
And they've been up there for years, and I think it still has an effect in, in the street.
Um, I saw an email that Chief Shepherd had sent. Asking if they could do one at Sterilite. Um, you know, a, a speed, we do something, but it's not a school. Um, Beth said she would check with MassDOT. Typically, these things require permits on the, um. If they're on the main road, so for Spalding, we would need a permit. And same for the high school. Um, from MassDOT, but not for Hawthorne Brook.
Right.
Yeah, so anyway.
Would, do you know when the deadline is for that?
It's soon.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about.
I wanna say like the twentieth of January, but I could be wrong. So. So. We should move forward with that, whatever that requires.
Yeah, I think they're really, I mean. They certainly do it hard.
Alright, uh, next, um, so I'm moving on to the next thing. Anybody else have anything else to say about it? About the speed reduction? Okay, uh, four point ten, discuss non-residents being on town boards and committees. So we received a, um. Uh, volunteer response. Actually, we received an appointment. For someone. Uh, on one of the committees in town, and that person does not live in Townsend. So I made the executive decision not to put the appointment on this time. But to put a discussion. Of what we want to do with. So I guess it's. What do you guys think?
Teresa?
Any thoughts on that, Teresa?
Yeah, um. I. I don't have any objection to it. I, uh. You know, we employ people from outside of the town. I don't see a problem bringing outside influences onto. Um, our committee, as long as they. I would, curious why they would want to serve, but, um, for, for example.
It's things like the library and the senior center. Where people from out of town use those services.
Yeah, I know. I know for sure, um, the veteran agents. And I know, I know that's probably not, it's an appointment, uh, well, I, maybe that's the thing, but I know that they serve multiple towns and, and things like that. There's also committees. Um, where they serve, uh, multiple towns, uh, memorial agents and stuff, so I have no problem with it.
This is an out-of-state residence.
That's what I said. Oh, out of state.
I was gonna say, just on a very.
Yeah, and again, across in like New Hampshire. We have even like, yeah, I have no problem.
There, there, there are some statutory boards, which is, would obviously not be eligible for someone out of town. So the planning board, their conservation tuition, the zoning board.
Yeah, this is a committee.
You couldn't have someone from out of town. With another committee that doesn't have any kind of.
Like if, like the cultural council. Or the gallery committee. Or the, um.
West Townsend Reading Room.
West Townsend Reading Room. Um, there are others like that. Um. It. I will say we have a hard time getting people to serve on committees. We do. But I, I guess my question. My. My concern is what happens if we wind up with committees that don't have any town residents on it? Um, is that okay? Do we limit the number of out-of-town residents that can be on an ad hoc committee or whatever? Um, do we just say, oh, sure, anybody? And then we wind up with the, um. With any non-elective board or non-charter board. Uh, or committee. Um, that is all out-of-town folks, maybe even on the state. Is that okay? Um. And, and that's why I did not put the appointment on this time. I think I, I personally would want to limit. The number of. People. That are, like, the, the historic commission. Can that be out of state, out of town? Um, that's not an elected board. Uh, you don't run for that, you get appointed to that. Is that something that's in the charter? I'm not so sure.
What?
Um. So.
Some, some are and some are not, some specifically state.
Right, there is some that's state.
Here, here's my thought on the matter, um.
Planning board is elected, so that.
It is elected, um, but let's say, for instance, planning board wants to create a. Subcommittee to look into. Something. Um, having, them having the ability to decide whether or not they wanted to, if no one in town or on that board has the expertise that they're looking for. Within that subcommittee. Should they or should they not be able to get somebody from another town?
I guess my thought is if you can't get somebody to build a committee from town. Then you should be thinking a different way. Is that the right thing to do? Um, if you don't have anybody in town that cares enough. To step up. Um. I don't know. I don't know the answer.
It's a hard one where you have, we, you know. That you're gonna have committees that are gonna have vacancies because it's hard enough to get people to serve these days. And is it? I think it goes much deeper than that. I think it's a charter change that they can add one ad hoc. Or have it out-of-state resident. They can fill it with either a town person or, or an other town person.
If a person moves out of town, and we've had this happen, I think it was Historic District. The Historic, um, Commission. Um, people have moved out of town and they've had to resign their positions. So there have been others. Um, I could probably name several. People who have left town and could no longer serve. On a committee that they were on. Um, and, and they resigned because of that. Um. Are we now saying, oh, well, if you move out of town, you can still do that? Um. I don't know.
I, I.
My automatic feeling is not. Definitely.
That's me too. I feel the same way, um, but. I believe that. It, it, I don't know. I also believe that we need to have some sort of, if you're, if you're. Let's say that the Historic District Commission. If, if they can't fill a position and they have one of their commissioners or, you know, um. Water is another one. Water has.
That's elected, that's different. I think that's different.
Right, right. I think you, there's, I think it's different for a board where you'd have to run and pull papers, because I think you're required to show. In those boards that you.
That you.
You live in the. In the place that. You're served. It, it. And I think it's different for boards that have statutory authority, like the Z B A is appointed. But it has statutory authority to make decisions. For homeowners in the town.
Right.
Whereas. You know, the memorial. Hall Committee. Doesn't have any kind of statutory authority to make decisions for, you know, like. If you, I, I think the other, the other question would be. Does the board have the, uh, authority to just tell that person? You're coming in with your out-of-state ideas, but we don't like them. We're, we're beating you without cause, so like. The, the board. Can't just go and willy-nilly kick someone in the middle of a term with the Z B A off of the D B A. Because they moved out. Well, if they move out, that's, that's one thing, but the, the board doesn't have the authority to, without a. Cause to kick somebody off the Z B A. Generally, it's their cause.
We don't. Yeah.
No.
Um.
They moved out of town, that's the cause. Yeah, well, that's it, yeah, that's.
Okay.
So I, I don't know.
Do we need a policy? Is this a policy kind of thing? Seriously?
Yeah, I mean, I think the first, I think the first question the board has to come to is. Is the board comfortable, yes, or is the board comfortable, no? Because I don't think you write a policy until you know.
What you're comfortable.
What the board feels they're comfortable with. You know, and if the answer is. No, I don't think you need a policy. Because the answer is just, no, we're not gonna let anybody's grounds down on any board committee, and that's that. Why have a policy, why, why have a policy? It gets more nuanced if you say, yeah, but. That's what you might need to say. The policy is, do you put it on these boards and committees? But none, no others.
Yeah.
You know, um. Yeah, I. Is it something we want to pursue, I guess is more the question.
Teresa, you're good with it, right?
Yeah, like, my answer would be that I wouldn't want to see a large number, and I would leave it up to, you know. I would want it to be limited. And I would like, um, the committees themselves, like you said, historical committee. If we had come up with some type of, if we say we're okay with it. Um, I wouldn't want to see it to be the entire committee, obviously, but ultimately leave it to the committee and say. The, the board is okay, how, and comfortable with outside. Uh, uh, you can, you know, approve a member, uh, but you, they also have the right to not choose to approve it.
See, I, to me. I don't know, I'm kind of like a black and white kind of person. Either is.
Yeah. I'm very gray, but you've gotten to know about me.
Fifty shades of it.
Uh, now, now.
Ultimately, I think, like I said, it, different committees are gonna have different feelings about it. You know, they're gonna have, see it very.
This is the first time.
Feel very structured and. Like, I know for sure, like, the veterans' things, we're, we're already, like, the. Already. Very involved with the New Hampshire group. Um, so I could see.
Different, that's a nonprofit or a.
No, 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 I'm talking about, somebody talked about the opening for the memorial. And, and I know that position wasn't full, um, the Veterans Memorial has to be a town veteran.
Well, I would, I think I said the meeting hall. The, the, the meeting hall, but e- either way, I, I think it's. It's a, it's a, I, I think the other thing is. There's been one person who's asked for one committee. I don't think it's the kind of thing, I mean. We have a hard time getting our citizens to participate in our own committees. I seriously doubt there's going to be. A wave of citizens from outside Townsend who, who feel. I mean, love it if we did. I mean, that, that's, well, I mean, a good thing, I mean, that's it.
No, I think it's a bad thing.
Well, but well.
If we're going good and bad.
Yeah, but, but until that wave happens, I'm not sure you need to do anything other than make the decision about. We have one committee and one person, I mean, you know, i- i- if, if people are, are, if the board. Is. Okay with the concept. Of having someone on a committee. Um. You know, I think the, the thing to, just to mention for Teresa is to remember that, like. Those committees don't get to choose their own members. The board is the one who gets to choose it, so they wouldn't be able to say. We're okay with this out-of-state person, but not, this board say we're not gonna do that out-of-state person. The board is the one who's gonna have to make that decision.
I was just not saying the individual person. I was just saying, we open it up. And say, we're considering allowing. Out-of-state members. Do you want to allow one out-of-state member on your board? Those committees that do.
I, I, who would be the final authority, though, Teresa?
We are.
We are.
Right. Well, you could ask, if, if, if it was, for instance. The, the. Council on Age, I don't know, is there a Council on Aging Committee?
There is council.
Friends with seniors.
The friends, the friends of the seniors is the separate, right?
Profit.
But say it's.
But it, but the council on aging is appointed by the selectman.
Yeah.
And so do we want our whole council on aging, for example, to be people who live outside of Townsend? Because there certainly are people that use the senior center, for example, or the library that don't live in town, and I'm okay with that. That I'm just saying that if you're on a committee that's gonna make decisions of whatever sort. Um, should that committee be made up of town residents?
So is this said committee, would that person need to be appointed, and is the selectman the one to appoint that?
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
I would say that they can recommend, and then the selectman would have the ability to say, you've already got two out of town members, so we're not gonna.
How would we know that? How would anybody know that? Because we don't, on that list the captain puts out, that, by the way, I think it's like last year. We don't have the current fiscal year up yet for FY twenty two, I think it's FY twenty one. But anyway, they don't have where you live. So I would have no idea if I didn't know the person and know that they lived in town. I would have no idea. It's a five member board and.
But on their, on their, their volunteer form, it asks what your street is.
Yeah, so the one that you're appointing, you know, but what what about the other four? You don't have their volunteer response form in front of you. They, we don't track that.
Well, I'm just saying, we should require that. If there, if we have to appoint, I'd want to see that.
Then we need the volunteer response form for all current members, including the appointee, to know whether or not the other people are on board, are Townsend residents or not.
We have to report that. Each board has to report to the to the town clerk every year, don't they?
But not the residents, they, just the names.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I I don't, I don't know the information.
It's not recorded.
I mean, if they have to get reappointed every year, we get.
We get reappointment.
Reappointment forms.
We, which gets the name, not what they have.
So this goes back to what you said, is this a policy changer? Is this a?
The easy, so the easy answer is to do what every other town that I'm familiar with is, does, we just say, you don't live here, you don't get to be on our boards, sorry.
That's, that's my feeling.
You can come and participate at meetings, which you, any, you know.
Anybody can.
You could go and participate at the council aging meeting without being the council on on the on the board. You could go participate in the library trustees meeting without being a library trustee. They don't check at the door if you're a resident. You could show up here.
Right.
And, you know, so we probably make them say their address, but in theory, the board could allow someone who lives in New Hampshire to participate, they, you know. That, I mean, and and I'm just saying that that's how every municipality that I'm aware of does it. They don't let generally out of town folks serve on boards. They just say, if you're interested, come to the meetings. You don't have to be a member of the board to come to the meeting. The energy committee had somebody from out of town meet there, we wouldn't stress about that.
So I vote that we take no action.
Okay. Okay, no action. I just had no written down.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I listened to your whole meeting and this whole conversation, so I'm just gonna say, I agree with your result. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll talk tomorrow about.
What that means.
All right, um, all right, so that's the end of meeting business. We're down to the work session. Um, ARPA projects, I don't really have anything there. Um, town administrator update.
Yes, I have a few, I, um, some we have already covered, so that is good. I just want to let the board, so let me know officially that um there was a lawsuit filed by Andrew Shepherd's campaign for the state rep race, which names the Townsend Town Clerk and board registers um, as defendants. Um, um, I am going to request authorization to allow town council to put in an appearance for them. I doubt there's going to be any heavy lifting that Adam would be required to do for it. We've communicated via email. But I do think he needs to to.
He was part of the reputation, wasn't he?
Yeah.
Okay.
So he's familiar with all of the the issues behind it. No, I think it's it's long, unless there's an objection, I think I have the authority to.
I think we need to do that.
I'd have to do that.
So Teresa, you're good with that?
Yep.
Um, and we'll let you know if and when anything of that, um. Um, I have some sad news, which is that um Katie Kuzinjan gave her notice today. Um, so I will be posting for her position tomorrow in uh highway and uh the hours from Brazil. Um, and Katie did a great job covering in the board of selectmen's office. She was the, she was the first person that I met in town was after my uh, after my interviews. First person I met in person after the, after the board was Katie and um, I apologize for making a little reaction. Um, and um, so I think the town's gonna really miss her. She's going on to figure better things and um we wish her well. Um, uh, the final thing is, um, we got a request uh from the Board of Health asking if the um, the selectman would be willing to reinstitute a masking policy for ten days, given the numbers of COVID, which have been rising, um, and they're the highest they are now since last winter.
You remember for the town Thompson?
Let's see, I.
I didn't check. Usually it's on Thursdays.
Yeah, I do.
I didn't check.
Apologize.
And what does that entail?
Before, it's everybody that comes in the building has to wear a mask. Um, that's what that entails.
That's it.
Yeah, so. The chairman of the Board of Health, so this happened last week at their meeting, chairman of the Board of Health liked formally asking selectmen to consider adopting ten day mask mandate due to illnesses that are current in recent social gathering or social gatherings during with the holidays. Um, uh, so that came in and let's see.
So that's, I just wanna, because I saw the emails, so um, that's the the town building, library, all town buildings? How does that work? And do we have to provide masks?
Um, and so I don't think the town's ever required to provide a mask if there's a masking policy. I think if we have a storehouse of masks, it is best practice to provide them, but I don't think there'd be a requirement. Um, I think we we probably have some, so I would suggest that we do that.
And we do have ARPA funds that for this purpose, that if we needed to, we could buy more. So that's not a, an issue. Um, the question is, is it necessary? Um, I I mean, I think we can put it as a suggestion, and I think everybody should do what they're comfortable in that. That's how I feel. I'm not, airports aren't masking, and I, um.
I've never been a proponent of, this is a thing that if you're going into, I mean, I go into certain public areas and I wear a mask because I don't want to be, you know, that's my my own choice, my 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 own thing, and I think that's how we should go with it. Um, I don't believe in telling people what they need to do. It's not our role there.
It, yeah, I guess for me, if there were, if there were a state mandate, if the state required it, I would probably say yes, but I'm not so, I if everybody isn't masking everywhere, I don't see what you are preventing. I guess it's the way it goes, and I'm into prevention. I will take as many shots as they give me. Um, but uh, I I guess at this point in all of this, unless we're, the grocery store is instituting masking, the post office, the schools, um, every building in town, uh, we're going back to, you know, the library deliveries where you call in and you set out the books. Um, are they recommending that the senior center? Uh, I I mean, we would be saying, everybody wears masks. I, I don't know. I'm a no.
I'm a no.
Teresa?
Like you said, I wanted to know what it entailed. Um, I would certainly recommend it. I'd certainly make masks available. I'd like to see a sign that says the public health is recommending masks, uh, COVID's on the increase. Um, and do what we could uh to make it known uh and make it easier for people to mask when they come into the building. But I wouldn't make it mandatory at this point.
I agree with that. I think that's a good way to to do it. So we could put masks in the hall outside the, um. Yeah, so I I would just put out masks.
That message is coming on the news too. It's coming out there. People are getting that message. I see more and more people, lots of, more and more people in the public wearing masks again with the.
And I think that, you know, if I'm in an airport, I have a mask on. Even now, if I'm on a plane, I have a mask on, but that's my choice. It's not a requirement. Um, and so I wouldn't require it, but I do think recommending it and making them available is good.
Mm hmm.
Um, but I would not, I'm a no on mandating. So let's, are we good with making masks available in the building and, you know, maybe put a sign on the entry door that says, you know, uh, COVID is on the increase. Um, you know.
Especially like at the senior center, if we could do that.
Okay, I'll send something out to Karen and Stacy and um, and um.
That's for the manager, yeah.
Yeah, nothing mandatory is, it's just so difficult for them out there when that happens, yes. Especially with the younger staff.
Anything else?
Um, that. I believe is that.
Uh, report, reports from board the S ons.
I have nothing. I basically have not been out of touch since the last meeting, so.
Hadn't had any meetings.
Um.
Christmas.
No, me either, but I have had email.
You too?
So I I just, well, that's all. Okay. Announcements and communications, um, winter shoveling. Um, the senior center has a call out, and I think this is up on the website even. Yeah, if anybody is interested in helping out, um, with shoveling for people who need it, please contact the uh, what?
Senior Center.
Please contact the senior center here, winter shoveling. Many seniors need assistance with shoveling, walkways, steps, and roof breaking. If you're interested in making some extra cash, the senior center can connect you with a senior in need. So please contact the senior center for that. Um, the town has won the NII A Wellness Award um, for the programs that um, the committee has put in place. So that will be presented at the MMA conference, which I think is January twenty first, twenty first. So will you be there?
I am registered.
So you can accept it for the town.
Distinguished.
I think Callie, um, Emily, Kelly, Emily McCaffrey, and who else was on that committee? That was it.
Oh, there was Beth and Karen and um Carla, Janet, myself.
Yeah.
I was the chair of that committee.
Wow, so it's appropriate that you.
To be fair.
Um, so anyway, to to take advantage of the MIA programs.
Yes. I think we're gonna keep working with them to to roll out more of those wellness.
Yeah, that's great.
So the employees, I guess, were, they were well received.
Um, so the uh, moving on, the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust, uh, Joseph Boy resigned from the um, committee. So we need a posting. We have two openings now, both both Mike Barosco's um, physician and Jones, so we are looking for community members for that. Um, so can we get a posting up on that? I think we can just add to the one that I think is already up. Correct? Um, the decisions on the dog grooming at four seven eight Main Street and the canal at two twenty seven Main Street um, are available, so um, you can look on the website for those. I think they were both familiar.
Um, what folder were they under, Madam Chair?
I may.
I went to find those and I didn't find those. What photo were they in?
Uh, they should have been in the, I, in the announcements and communications for this meeting. If they weren't there, somehow they didn't get moved in. They are in communications for twenty twenty two under December in the share plan.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, I'm pretty sure they both were.
Yes, they were.
Yeah. All right, um. I've already done that one. Uh, we have a SNAP and WIP application um, day on January seventeenth. This is also at the senior center. Um, so uh, from three thirty to five, so if you're interested in SNAP and WIP benefits, this is for food, uh, you can attend that meeting. And I think that's up on the website as well. I'm sure.
I think, I think so.
Okay, um. The MMA conference, um, if you're interested in attending, this is for the selectman. The uh, you should have gotten um, signups, registration in your email, correct?
Yes.
About that?
Mm hmm.
So um, that's open, and again, June twenty and twenty one. Uh, the the Wild and Scenic Grant Round is open. Uh, Joan Walkerwood sent the email and that, I think it was just last night, I just saw it today, so. Yeah, it just came yesterday, so um, I'll put that somewhere to look at, uh, if the town is interested in applying, and I think we should, for a, my idea is for the um, the baseline documentation report for the CR on swine equipped netters to uh, go, because that's the headwaters of the swine equip, right there, that piece of property borders, the headwaters of the swine. And so it would be a good use of those funds, and we need um, a BDR for the uh, state for the CR application. So that is what I'm thinking. And I will check that out with Joan when I'm checking out for a mass trap. All right, uh, there are a few other things here, gift card donations, oh, accepting now through December twenty twenty two. That's with the community services coordinator. And this is on YouTube, I think, Townsend presents Breaking the Spitlaw, uh, mental health and substance misuse, and that is available for viewing on Channel Nine. Um, and it's also on the YouTube for the town.
Mm hmm.
So, and there is a schedule, it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, four AM and four PM, Tuesday and Thursday, seven AM and seven PM on Saturday and Sunday, uh, noon and midnight. And that's all I have for announcements. Any others? All right, our next meeting is January tenth at seven PM here in the Great Hall. It's joint with the. It's joint with the Board of Water Commissioners.
Can I ask a question? Do you want to do a Zoom that Zoom?
Do what Zoom?
That meeting?
This meeting?
On January 10th.
On January 10th. Uh, yeah, we could do that soon. Is it in the Great Hall though?
Yeah, it's in the Great Hall and we're going to have to set it up, that's why I'm asking.
Um, I would say no. My reasons for that is it's difficult for me to play with Zoom when we have the big hall. I mean, it's not a forum thing.
Yeah, I know, I, I understand that, I'm just saying, we need to set it up, I got a plan and all that kind of stuff.
The question would be whether or not. Cause we won't have a screen.
Yeah.
Right.
So you wouldn't be able to see the people, but it would allow more people to hear the information than could stay at home and watch on their computers rather than.
As long as it's understood that it's not participatory for people that are on Zoom.
Which is a matter of that, you know, figuring out how.
Um. How big of a mess is that to set it up?
I can settle that. And we'll settle it up, I'll talk to Dave.
Okay.
It was not participatory, you could keep the camera on the one, on the, on the.
On the screen.
Yes. And not have to pan to the audience.
Yeah, because we can't do the owl, it doesn't work.
It doesn't work in there, right.
So.
Um, it, it's, it's difficult. Um. But if you are willing to set it up.
Uh, let me talk with, with, um, TCAM and we'll see the.
I think, I don't think it's posted with the Zoom one, is it? It's already posted, isn't it? Um.
I think the agenda is posted, but we can, we can add it, like we have it till the end of the week. I meant that with Zoom, like.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I'll talk to TCAM.
I, I wasn't planning on that. When we're in the Great Hall, I, I feel like no.
You show up or?
Or, you know, watch it after the fact, you get the same information.
Yeah.
It's just that you don't get it real time. So that's all.
Well, we could ask, the other possibility would be rather than the Zoom, ask if TCAM could livestream it. Cause that would provide the same opportunity for someone to just put on the TV.
Yeah.
And watch, if it's not going to be participatory, what's the difference between your computer and.
Well, I, I figured they would put it on Channel 9.
That's what I'm asking, we need to figure out what is this, so we can.
I think that they would do Channel 9.
So we need to ask them to, to do that. Let me talk to Dave and see what.
Yeah, but not Zoom.
Okay, I mean, that, I, I think that would accomplish their goal, which would be just get it out to other people's.
Right.
Information, which is, I think the goal.
I, I realize that everybody doesn't have Channel 9. You know, if you don't have Comcast, you don't get Channel 9. Um, you know, it doesn't do you any good if you're.
Is that not a digitally broadcast?
Don't have.
I, I honestly don't know.
Do you what?
Do they digitally broadcast local access cable channels?
Mm-hmm.
Should you pick it up with a digitally antenna?
Yes, you should be able to.
I just don't know if that's, that's a, that's a legitimate question, I don't know.
I think, but if you can pick up the cable, yes, you can.
I don't, I, I, I have, I, I've cut the cord, I don't have cable at my house, so I, but I know, I've never tried to watch it. I was just going to. You're trying to watch it.
Okay, um. Talk to Dave and see what it is, but I'm not wedded to Zoom on that. But I did think it was going to be, well, it doesn't have to be live, it could be.
Well, it should be taped and put on YouTube, but if you have it live, I mean.
If we're going to tape it.
You might as well, it's not like, yeah, you can go live, as long as they have the right equipment set up.
I, I would say that for sure.
Okay.
Um.
You just, I just want to give them a heads up because it's not that far away and.
Right.
Then we wouldn't have to change the agenda.
All right, January 17th is our next regular meeting at 6:00 PM, right here. Uh, January 24th is at now 6:55 PM. Um. In the Great Hall, a special town meeting. And special town meeting continuation. And that is it. So is there a motion to review and sign payroll and build's payable warrants out of session?
I make a motion that we review payroll out of session, warrants out of session?
Review and bills.
Payroll and bills payable warrants.
That's what I said, but I heard hip cut in between payroll. That is second.
All right, uh, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Sex and Durianian, yes.
And Barack Obama, yeah. All right, and with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion that we adjourn at 9:39.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Sex and Durianian, yes.
And Barack Obama.